Hi, friends. Are you?
I want to call to order the Seabrook City Council meeting of November 19th. It is nine, it's 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the law of the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Constitution, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Item 1.0, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Michelle Brown.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Brown, and I live at 1102 Ethics Court. I'm sorry. So my name is Michelle Brown, and I live at 1102 Ethics Court in Seabrook. Good evening, fellow city government and community members. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight as we're considering the appointment of new members to the Economic Development Committee. We stand at a pivotal moment for our city, and I firmly believe it's time for change. Our collective goal must be to restore our community to a thriving city, one where small businesses flourish and residents feel proud of their environment. The impacts of COVID-19 and the 146 expansion are behind us, yet we're left facing the remnants of a once vibrant city, in my opinion. We see vacant, dilapidated buildings where thriving businesses once operated, making it clear that urgent action is needed to address these challenges. To initiate this change, we must begin with a thorough and honest assessment of the current EDC's performance. It's vital that during this appointment period, we must listen to our community's call for change. This includes embracing new perspectives and innovative ideas in our leadership roles. We must also remember that intent does not correlate with impact. Simply showing up for meetings is insufficient. We need the EDC leaders to drive change and regularly deliver meaningful and measurable results that resonate with our community. In recent committee, in recent meetings, it's become alarmingly clear to me that the current EDC has failed to provide our city and the broader community with progress updates or concrete metrics that demonstrate their efforts to revise, revitalize our local economy. Here's an example. A recap of the EDC's commitments for 2024 year should have been routinely shared with the committee and the city leadership. These regular updates should have included details about how they were progressing towards our established annual goals. Additionally, the EDC should have routinely brought forth specific barriers that they encountered so the city leadership could have better addressed those barriers in a timely manner. In all fairness to the EDC, if such updates have been happening or have happened, the communication has not reached the community effectively, leaving us in the dark about the progress. When looking back, or when I look back at the 2023, 24 EDC performance, I, as of others, as others in the community, have recognized a significant lack of visibility regarding the EDC's impact on our local economy. Critical questions remain unanswered for me. Examples include what specific impact has the EDC achieved in 2024? Additionally, what strategies, projects, and initiatives are in place to ensure that our community's needs are going to be prioritized in 2025? In summary, to foster a thriving community in 2025 and beyond, we must demand a greater transparency and accountable accountability from the EDC. We need leadership that's committed to measurable outcomes and active communication with citizens. It's essential that our new EDC members are equipped with both vision and the skills necessary to drive meaningful change. As the leadership considers new appointments, I encourage the city leadership to be forward-thinking, seek to balance out the committee with some new members that bring new energy, thought leadership, and diverse skill sets to the table. It's important that all of the team members have a demonstrated history of driving meaningful and measurable outcomes, and that the leadership skills, they have the leadership skills to foster a healthy community environment where small businesses can thrive and residents can feel proud of their community. In closing, I love our community and remain a steadfast supporter for economic development in the city of Seabrook, and will happily volunteer my time to help make a difference. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to seeing our community rise to meet these challenges.
Thank you. Kristy Hatfield.
Perfect. Okay. All right. I'm Kristy Hatfield. My husband and I own Seabrook Cheese Company that just opened business December of 2023. Address is 1406, 1406 Main Street. We proposed an idea to Gail and Sean Landis about ideas on how to bring new business into the old Seabrook district. We know personally well the challenges that you face when trying to bring a new business into old Seabrook. FEMA regulations and some other things make it very, very challenging. There are homes that are adorable, but the, the financial aspect of bringing them up to code and opening a business is one that I think most people don't understand until they think about putting a business down there. We have aspirations to expand and bring business down into old Seabrook, and one of the ideas that we brought to Gail was things that I've seen in other coastal communities, not necessarily in Texas, but there's some Florida communities that we frequent a lot that don't have barrier islands, and they have beautiful communities with walkable shops, and they have these mobile mini homes that, after a bit of research, I think can achieve some of the things that we want and need that are cost-effective and can work with some of the FEMA regulations. So I'm in favor of us approving this for the district. So just want to give you guys a couple of examples of the ideas that I'm thinking about that could be really great to bring business down into old Seabrook and make it the community that I, I envision it. They're energy efficient, the materials can be very cost-effective, they are mobile, there are some guidelines that you have to follow with FEMA, but this would be very much in favor of the business owner to overcome some of the challenges that FEMA presents with rising things to a certain height. They're very versatile, they can be commercial spaces, they can be pop-up shops, they can even be coffee shops. There are some regulations from things that I've looked at as it relates to what type of food or vending is going to come out of that, so there would need to be some guidance, but very, very versatile. They could be, they could be rental homes, VRBOs, they could be boutiques, very highly customizable, great options for down in Seabrook. So as I had mentioned, this, it can be very compliant with some of what FEMA has in place for us. I thought there was some additional pictures I wanted to show. This was something that brought to my attention and sparked the idea of what I would like to do there. We can make them ADA compliant with stairs and ramps. There's many options here. In some of the areas that I like to attend and visit with my family, they have very specific regulations about the look of them, the style, the building materials, siding, so on and so forth. So you can be very, very strategic about what the look is to keep it looking nice, looking new, and not like a mobile home, but instead a mini house that's on wheels. We can also accommodate food trucks in a different way. If we don't want it to look like a food truck park, you can go the mini home route, which would be an alternative business idea for down in Seabrook. Brick and mortar's very hard for a new business, but there's plenty of mobile food trucks that have exciting menus that bring people down on weekends to have a community feel, and I think this would be a great way to achieve that. Implementation and logistics obviously needs help with the city, and so that's the reason that I presented this to Gail. Hopefully with everybody's approval, you can see the vision that I have for old Seabrook and, and unique ways to bring businesses down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Kristy. Kelly Stewart.
Good evening, Kelly Stewart. Over the last few months, I have personally spoken to over 400 Seabrook citizens, most of whom signed the recall petition. There were many complaints about the city government, but two specific criticisms were constant: the activities and overall performance of the EDC and the city manager. There has been a gross lack of involvement, communication, and transparency with small, non-commercial local businesses. Contractual promises have not been kept, presentations were not made in a timely fashion, or if even at all, and little to nothing was done to help businesses struggling to stay afloat during the 146 expansion. In fact, the city made it harder to operate a specific business and spent taxpayer money to file an injunction against not only an iconic business in Seabrook, but one of the most iconic businesses in the state. This local business has been featured in the Texas Monthly Magazine several times. It has been a top tourist destination for several people in the surrounding areas and brought in large amounts of tax revenue to the city while it was allowed to operate. After the injunction was filed and operations slowed, the city of Seabrook announced a significant budget shortfall. During the recall, many citizens learned that the former EDC director was let go and replaced by the current city manager. While this issue has been brought up to council several times by various citizens, there still has been no resolution. The city manager has also allowed an oversight that permitted a Section 8 housing status that caused the city a considerable amount of loss of, in tax revenue. Because of these issues, it is clear to me that the leadership in the EDC and the city manager positions needs to change, and from speaking from the, to the citizens, they want change. Since the recall, there has been a lot more activity in the EDC, and that is very welcomed news. Although most of the news has been about larger commercial businesses and franchises, while I personally appreciate uptick in activity, it does not distract me from the past and current grievances. For one, I would like to know why the city of Seabrook spent our taxpayer money to go after one business for building permit violations, but did not go after others. Secondly, I want to know why the bond that people will vote on in the upcoming May 2, 2025 election for a new police station and community swimming pool is not being kept separate. One bond for the police station and one bond for the swimming pool. Giving the citizens options to have one and not the other seems completely reasonable and fair. While the effort to keep them together seems to be an overreach of authority to try to, to try to manipulate the citizens into thinking that they can't have one without the other, that kind of overreach is what the citizens are sick and tired of. Thank you.
Veronica Baumgartner.
Need to get back to my notes. Hi, I'm Veronica Brumbow. I have just a few topics. Mine is maybe not as formal as anybody else, but I'm, I'm speaking on the topic of the EDC appointments, and my comments are maybe a little bit more general than what you've heard so far. Firstly, I think turnover and change are very important, and I would like to see some measures implemented in terms of term limits. I realize that keeping experience is also an important part and being able to maintain that continuity, so something like, you know, a six-year limit where, as long as there are active applicants, we have that limit of six years and maybe a limit of two people for, who have been longer than that for the purpose continuity. And then from the EDC, I would like to see and have this considered in looking at the applicants and deciding who is going to be on this committee. First and foremost, transparency and also a social media presence, because that is something that attracts new businesses as well as consumers and commerce who would come to Seabrook to do business either as a vendor or as, as a buyer. I'd also like to see fewer residential developments approved in the area. I'm not sure if that's really the, the economic development so much as the, the zoning, but I think when we look at the public works that we have available, we're already purchasing water from outside of Seabrook, and that should give us pause in adding more load to all of that. I'd like to see us assess the utilization of existing empty buildings. Those buildings are getting run down all along the 146 storefronts, the storefronts at the corner of Nassau Road 1 and Lakeside. These are becoming an eyesore, and frankly, seeing new buildings go up just is very disappointing doing that instead of trying to attract some businesses to utilize that space. I'd like to see us make some partnerships with surrounding tourism opportunities. For example, we have a thriving cruise industry in Galveston, and we have an opportunity to maybe draw some of those cruisers into Seabrook by offering hotel stays along with a local experience, and that's just one example of something that we could do differently to bring in more business in the city of Seabrook. And finally, I would like to see us advance the cause of urban agriculture. That's something that's entirely missing from our, from our area, and I think it would be a nice thing for us to add. Some other businesses that I would like to see are things that we can attract to some of these empty buildings. I'm sorry, I skipped back because I missed a line in my paragraphs. Urgent care. You have to travel well outside of Seabrook to find urgent care facilities. Teen and family entertainment venues. You know, we lost Putt-Putt Fun House out towards Webster. Why not look at bringing something like that into Seabrook? You have to go pretty far to find a craft store. You also need to go relatively far to find an organic supermarket, and these are just very limited examples. So I thank you all for your time, and I hope that these ideas have planted some seeds for the people who are going to be making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Angela Cervantes.
Angela, excuse me, Angela Cervantes, 2534, Loganberry Circle. Usually, I'm very well thought out and write my speeches in advance. I'm not going to give a long speech tonight, but instead, I'm just going to read some names and numbers. Paul Dunphy, 12 years. Teri Chapman, 12 years. Gary Bell, 11 years. Kevin Ferguson, seven years. And Ann Whacker, two years. So that's our current EDC committee and the tenure that they have. It has become very apparent during the recall and before and after speaking with people in the community that we're at a precipice right now, and it's time for change. There have been 11 applicants, from what I understand, for this next EDC committee. I am highly encouraging you guys to consider new and fresh voices. You don't have to replace everybody, but what you guys have right now, the committee that we have, although it was great and we appreciate their time, I think that the time of change is upon us. So as our elected officials, I'm asking you guys to represent your constituents and take us in a different direction. I wanted to bring up one thing also. I saw on the agenda the bond package, the bond package that we voted down previously that's going to be shoved down our throat. Again, that's $120,000 that's now been spent out of our taxpayer money on plans for this bond package that we've clearly stated is a no-go. For some, they just don't understand the need. Seabrook is not growing, we're landlocked, so growth, if you look, is minimal, as well as the fact that some people just don't like the location. You're setting it next to a church with an active youth group, a school, and a daycare. If you're going to cram this down our throat, I highly encourage you to look in a different location. And I've said this, and other people have said this, and it's falling on deaf ears, but, but we're the voters, we're the residents, we're the taxpayers. It's time to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Mayor and City Council and all members of city staff may make announcements about city community events.
All right. The Clear Creek Community Theater Broadway Cabaret will be at the Community House right over behind us Friday to Sunday, this week, November 22 and 24. Showtimes on Friday, the 22nd, are at 7:30 PM. Saturday, the 23rd, at 2:00 and 7:30, and Sunday, the 24th, at 2:00 PM. That should be a good show. Tree lighting is Thursday, December 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Community House, right across the road as well. And Breakfast with Santa is coming up December 14th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Community House. Bring your kids by. Is there anything I've missed?
Anybody else? Thanks, Rob. Item 2.0, presentations. Item 2.1, presentation of a storm-ready community designation to Seabrook Emergency Management Services, excuse me, by the National Weather Service. Dan, how are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you. All right. It's good to speak with you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Dan Riley, National Weather Service. Formally, I actually retired a few weeks ago, but we, we started the storm-ready process before I retired with Kevin and before Kevin with Jeff Gallion. And basically, what is storm-ready? It's a certification from the National Weather Service to recognize communities that have multiple ways to get weather information and have multiple ways to get that out to the citizens. And we've had a very close relationship with Seabrook over the years, many, many weather events dating back to Hurricane Ike. That's Uh, that's uh, when I first came on the scene. Uh, I had worked in Pennsylvania, Michigan, Montana. Uh, arrived in Southeast Texas in two thousand and eight, just a few months prior to Hurricane Ike. So I'd worked hurricanes on the East Coast as well. And we know what an impact Hurricane Ike had on the local area with the storm surge and the flooded areas. Uh, so it's very important to have these uh, these well-developed weather plans that Seabrook has. Now, they also have a very strong PIO team. Uh, so they get that weather information and, and, and fan it out uh, to uh, the citizens through social media, through uh, mass notification systems uh, and so on. So again, Weather Service recognizing Seabrook tonight uh, as a storm-ready community. And uh, you know, we just want to congratulate you all. We, I'm here with Haley Adams, a forecaster within National Weather Service. And of course, Kevin Rogers, the emergency manager uh, for uh, Seabrook. So uh, again, congratulations, Seabrook, on this designation.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it.
And we have a sign uh, to present.
So with Dan's retirement, we uh, felt we needed to get Dan something for his uh, years of uh, un-tiring efforts throughout the years for Seabrook and its citizens. Uh, we wish you the heartfelt thanks and your lo- for your loyalty and friendship. You will long be remembered and appreciated.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Item two point two. Receive a presentation from Randall Scott Architects on the proposed design for the new Seabrook Police Station in consideration of a potential two thousand and twenty-five bond proposition following by the, followed by the informational update from city staff on the existing police station.
Mayor and council, uh, we do have Randall Scott with Architect Firm here tonight with us. We're going to flip the agenda just a little bit on our item. I'm going to go through a few slides. Uh, Chief Rolf Nelson is also going to help me in the introduction slides. And then we'll pass it off to Randall Scott to kind of go through where he's at in the process. So the outline for tonight, I just wanted to kind of touch on uh, location, flood risk, which uh, started our conversation when we looked at this project. Um, in addition, some existing conditions and operational challenges that uh, we've, we've known uh, with having Chief Nelson come on board. I think there's some other things that have come to light. And then we'll end with uh, the architect going into the floor plan and then the estimated cost. So being here during Hurricane Ike, uh, this building was significantly impacted. At that point, um, it set the current council on a path of looking at getting critical infrastructure out of harm's way. So our wastewater plant was completely annihilated. We were able to successfully get that uh, almost moved this year. And that'll be taking the main street offline. But the police department was another department that was significantly impacted. Uh, public safety is one of our first responders and that was not anything different than what we suffered during Ike. With the wastewater plant down, um, our officers were expected to be at every entry point of the community. And they really didn't have any place to come back to. We quickly tried to get some temporary shelter for everybody while we all uh, kind of went through the recovery process. During Ike, uh, being on the first floor and the vehicles and equipment that were left behind, we had significant loss. Our computers were lost, our nine-one-one dispatch cons- console was completely lost. And our offices and our jail were completely uh, unusable. So talking about the site, our flood risk, again, looking at this, were to look at city properties that we had available. We did do a property exchange off one forty-six and have property uh, that was mentioned earlier off of Lakeside. So looking uh, purely at the different floodplains, this is one of the uh, benefits uh, that we looked at. So you can see that we're in an AE fifteen currently in this site. Uh, but it is an X shaded, moving to that part of town. This is on the high-water marks, looking back at FEMA. Um, we knew that we had at the uh, wave activity well over ten feet. Uh, we settled down and probably had about six to ten inches of damage in here once the wave activity stopped, but it got pretty high that night uh, as the waves rolled in. Just as a recap, this is a picture because we were completely down on the first floor. Uh, things quickly happened. We got the, the mobile homes in. Harris County was a huge partner of getting our first responders set up and being there for us as far as nine-one-one. Um, and the personnel getting to use the Harris County camper as well until we got the temporaries in. So it was definitely a collaboration of uh, partnership. I'll ask Chief Nelson to come up uh, and talk a little bit about our existing conditions and operational challenges.
Good evening, mayor, council. In addition to the flood risk that the current station is now subjected to, which I might add in, as everyone knows, my personal home flooded as well years ago. But um, it's tough working out of a facility that's your office or your base of operations when it's flooded and destroyed and trying to help the community when they're going through the same problems. So, but as far as challenges in the existing facility, um, the pictures up on the screen depict our evidence room, which is at capacity and uh, the city manager went in there and toured it with me. The pictures do not depict the actuals uh, circumstances. It's all the way to the ceiling, all the way to the walls. There's evidence on the floor. And unfortunately, uh, most of it, I mean, we're in the process of a heavy purge. But the legal requirements mandate that we keep a significant portion of that evidence, some of it indefinitely. Uh, so we're kind of restricted on, on that. We can't get rid of what we can't get rid of. There's also the closed confines. When the facility was originally built in ninety-six, uh, we had about half of the staff that we have now, actually less than half. So the quarters are very tight, not just for evidence and things of that nature, but also for personnel. Uh, we've got no room, there's no uh, there's no private space really anywhere other than the restrooms. And those are uh, pretty close quarters themselves. Um, as you can see in the picture that's on the screen now, the dispatch office is right next to the break area, uh, closing it off. Uh, while it offers some level of quietness to the dispatch area, uh, it doesn't exclude all the sound. Uh, what's not in the photograph is the interview room, which is just around the corner. And if anyone's in the break room, just at a normal speaking voice, you can, it picks up on the microphone in the interview room. So it's very difficult. We've almost got to run everyone out of the station uh, if we have someone in the interview room conducting an interview. Uh, the jail, it's got its design flaws. Uh, among them, the doors open the wrong way. Uh, to change those would be very labor-intensive and I'm imagining very expensive since it's steel, heavy steel doors and cinder block. They're also failing. Uh, we've had to replace hinges on two of the doors and we've got another one now that the hinges are failing on that one. Just, just because they're old. It's an old building. Uh, the gun lockers were placed inside the jail. As you can imagine, that's not a good idea. Uh, you want to lock them up before you go inside the jail. Uh, there's also no barrier, no physical barrier between where we book the suspects that are brought into the jail and the officers. So there's a small counter, but that's not the way that should be designed. Uh, the lockers on the screen are in the restrooms. That's where people keep their personal items while, while they're working. And then the dispatch center, there's only two consoles. So if we have a console go down or if we have a major event, uh, it's very difficult or would be very difficult to man operations because then you can only handle one set or one phone line of incoming emergency calls. And that's going to be the same location that the dispatcher uh, is going, going to be sitting to dispatch fire, EMS and police. So it's, it's very tight now. Uh, there's also no supervisor area. The, one of the partitions divides off where the dispatchers sit from where their supervisor sits. So there's no location, someone else has to vacate an office for the dispatch supervisor to conduct personnel counseling sessions with the dispatcher. So it's, it's not ideal, to say the least. Um, also, in the event of an emergency, we've only got one shower for each uh, gender. So we've got one in the male restroom and one in the female. So if we've got everyone on duty, um, it's going to take twelve hours probably just to shower folks uh, and get them spun up, ready to go out again. This picture, it's a little difficult to see, but we've got our vehicle parking, where we park our patrol vehicles in that personal parking area on the top left. Uh, so the officers come to work, they park their personal vehicles in there, and then they have to drive over to the station, which is across the street, which is an unsecured area. And it's a very tight parking lot with a lot of corners and places for uh, people to hide around. So that's uh, creates a security issue for the officers and for the general public because we want them coming into the police station. Uh, but it's, it's less than ideal because it's not a secure area.
So in summary, um, this is our largest department. It is our first responding uh, department. We have uh, just cat, going back to Ike, looked at this in a lot of our CIP planning projects, our strategic planning as an infrastructure goal. Any project as far as, as large as this, we did this with Public Works as well. It's, it's a process. So from beginning to end, we're looking, um, if this were to go to a may election, these officers would not be in a finished construction until well into twenty twenty-seven. A couple of points if you want to touch on these.
Sure. Uh, the benefits to the community, there's a, a number of them. Just for the community, uh, we're going to have, it would be a, a better facility for them to feel comfortable coming to if they need police services. It would also uh, provide them with an area where they could hold public meetings because we, there will be a classroom space so that we can do onsite training for the officers. But that could be used also for uh, public meetings. Uh, we intend to have citizens' police academies engage there. We routinely conduct RAD training. And we will, we would continue to do that in that classroom space. It also provides for uh, a more attractive facility for potential recruits or applicants to the police department. Uh, it's difficult when we're competing for, and it's difficult, I'm sure you've heard, uh, getting people to, in, to sign up to be cops anymore. To work in an area where uh, the facility is very old, very tight, uh, very cramped. When they can go down the street, earn the same pay and have a newer facility that's more conducive to uh, a human working environment. Uh, and we all know that the environment we're in impacts our, our psychological well-being. So uh, the ones that do come in, uh, we have a, a pretty decent turnover rate. I mean, most agencies do, but uh, I think this would go a long way to help us retain some of our employees as well as attract new employees.
Thank you, chief.
All right. We'll have Randall Scott, uh, with Randall Scott Architects.
Good evening. Great to be with you again. Thanks for partnering with Randall Scott Architects on this exciting project. Just from a site planning standpoint, so the last time I met with you, we, the project had municipal court and police. It was a much larger facility. And um, and we were asked to scale that down to a number that um, that hopefully the city and the voters could agree with. So we've removed municipal court. Municipal court will remain where it is in this building. Um, and uh, and so the building is smaller. Uh, we'll actually probably reduce the amount of parking that you're seeing on this plan uh, because it's still reflecting more or less the parking that was for both buildings. But um, the, one of the other changes we've made to this is the golf cart path that runs around the north side of the property, completely around the outside, so they don't have to cross over the main entrance. The main entrance is off that drive from uh, Lakeside Drive. Uh, and the police department is still back sort of on that west side uh, with three uh, high-speed rolling gates that allow them to come in and out quickly. They'll have access to uh, the back road there on Stanley Drive Lane in an emergency. But otherwise, they should be, uh, most of the traffic should be coming off of Lakeside Drive. Um, and so uh, the Sally Port where police officers would come in and drop off a detainee is where she has the cursor. Uh, it's a single Sally Port. Uh, one of the things that's required by the code here in this part of the country is a safe room. It's required by the ICC code, International Code Compliance Code. So there has to be an area where first responders can go and remain in an emergency and, and remain safe. So it's tornado hurricane-resistant structure. And that's what the Sally Port is that she was pointing to a little bit ago. And it has a self-sustaining space where they can stay for a few hours or longer if they need to. Uh, and it has a kitchenette in it, it has a restroom in it and a fan and has a portal they can get out of manually if they need to. So it kind of serves as a dual purpose and uh, that's a good thing. Uh, the design of this building is intended to be all tilt-wall construction, tilt-wall concrete, which is a very economical way to build a building. We've simplified the exterior quite a bit to bring the cost down. It will probably just be exposed tilt-wall concrete with some paint and maybe some reveals in it to keep the cost to a minimum, make it efficient. But the nice thing about tilt-wall is it makes it ballistic resistant uh, all the way around. So uh, so it's a great material to use for a police facility. And it'll be a nice facility, but it won't be anything that's over the top. We could go to the floor plan next, please. Okay. The uh, the orange area to the right, that's the main entrance. And there are public restrooms when you come in that door. And immediately in front of you, when you come in that door, you're going to come to the records department, which is the blue department to the left, just a little further. Yep, there. So there's a reception uh, desk, there are reception counter there so records can help anyone who comes in the main lobby. They are there from eight to five. After five o'clock, the area to the uh, to, to, above that um, is the um, uh, dispatch area. There are four consoles in this, but dispatch area. As chief said, they have two now and one goes down, they're in trouble. So they really have three active ones, space for three active ones and a supervisor uh, office. And then there's a training uh, uh, console for, for dispatch as well. And uh, and they will handle, after five o'clock, dispatch handles anybody that comes in the main lobby and needs paperwork or has a request or needs to see an officer. The, as I said, the public restrooms are just outside of that on either side, flanking the entrance. And then there's a security door. So CGIS, which is uh, basically, you have to be, uh, CGIS certified to be beyond those doors. Uh, security, you have to be a policeman, basically. Uh, they, those doors are there at the end of the orange and the public can't get into any of the rest of the space where the yellow circulation path is. They can, however, get to the community and training room, which is that green room to the bottom. It holds sixty people. Uh, it'll be a nice amenity for the citizens as well as a great training facility for police, which is absolutely necessary. Uh, yeah, moving to the left, there is the break room, which is right next to the uh, community rooms, that green space next to the community room. That, yep, that one. Uh, so uh, the break room uh, serves all of the police department. It's a community space where they come together and see each other uh, and spend time sort of social engineering them together. Uh, and, but it also serves as the sort of catering area for the community and training room. And we'll have a, a parking space outside of there and a sidewalk so that it, that door can serve as a service access to bring food and, and catering to that training room and uh, community room when necessary. To the left of that is uh, basically, those are sort of the briefing and report writing rooms. So that's where officers are going to get their uh, their assignments in the morning. And at the end of the day, they're going to come back and fill out their reports. They're pretty straightforward. The finishes in these spaces are all pretty uh, bare bones and straightforward. Most of it will probably be sealed concrete floors, painted walls, rubber base and acoustical ceiling tile like we have in here. So um, very economical exterior with the tilt-wall concrete, very economical on the inside. We're going for trying to get a, a functional building uh, that is warm and friendly, but uh, is, is not anything uh, ex- exorbitant. Further to the left of that are the sergeant and uh, lieutenant offices uh, in that green area, just sort of the lower left-hand corner. And uh, moving up to the olive-colored green area above that is the CID, which is the criminal investigation. Basically, the detectives and some other support spaces are in there. To the right of that, in the center of the building, those are the locker rooms and training To the right of that, in the center of the building, those are the locker rooms and training areas. So Chief mentioned there's only one shower now. There will be six showers in here. The interesting concept that we've developed here, and this is something particular to our company, is there are movable, demountable partitions that are three feet wide in the size of a door, basically, that can be moved around in those, in that, in those quadrants so that you can shift to adjust to the number of female versus male officers, which is always a major issue with all your existing police facilities. So we've solved that with a new concept of being able to move and adjust the size of the men's versus the women's side, which can change on a moment's notice. And so it's a cool concept. All the gray spaces in the center are building support. They're electrical, emergency electrical. There will be a generator, emergency generator, HVAC, and those kinds of things. Those are the spaces in the center. The sort of pink area in the upper left-hand corner, that's detention. So that, they would bring people into that Sally Port, the dark, yes, the dark purple area, bring them through a man trap, bring them into the booking area, and then they will be assigned one of those cells in the upper area of that lavender color. There's also an intoxicizer, an intoxic, a toxic interview room there, intoxication interview room, and some other support spaces there. And then the, the light blue space to the right of the detention is the evidence room. So Chief was talking about how, how, how full they are now. This expands that. It has a rolling file system so they can stack lots of things, basically all the way to the ceiling, but it's not static, it moves. There's also a separate area for drugs with a special exhaust system, which is required where she's got the cursor. There's an area for valuables, and there's an area for gun storage. Those are all required to be separate. There's an office for the officer of the evidence room, and there's a evidence processing area to the left. Yeah, thank you. So that's evidence, and there's also an area in the center they can use for bulk evidence, like a large engine out of a car, and that kind of thing that you can't put on a shelf. And then the, sort of the dark blue area in the upper right-hand corner, that's the chief and, and his administrative team. So the chief, a future chief's off, assistant chief's office, a sergeant, several lieutenants, community group there to work with community, and, and a conference room. So that's kind of the basic layout of the building. It's, it's very efficient, it's very cost-effective, and I think the numbers that we have put together for you will reflect that. Do you want me to talk about the numbers?
Yep.
Do you have a slide on that? Okay, thank you. So the construction cost only, the, the amount that you have to pay a contractor to build this building would be about between 10.6 and 11.7. The total project cost, which is the cost that you have to, the city needs to write a check for at the end of the day for our fees, for geotechnical engineering surveying, and all that type of material testing, that's going to run right around 15 million. That would be my recommendation that you, that you need to set aside 15 million dollars for, for the total cost of the project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on either the layout or the costs at this time.
Any questions, counsel?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I know there are code requirements on proximity to, of a police station to a school. Obviously, where we're located here, we're well within that, but what is actually that requirement? Do you know off the top of your head?
I don't have that off the top of my head, councilman. I'm sorry, I don't know that without checking, but I'd be happy to get that information to the city manager for you. I'll do that tomorrow. Yes.
I've got a question for the
Yes, sir.
On the holding cells, how long is somebody being held there? Or is it just holding to be for being transferred to county?
If it's a municipal person that's being held on a municipal warrant or something like that, which is Class C, you know, citations, they could be there for a couple of days. Anyone else, if they're going to the county, typically they're there less than 24 hours before we transfer them to the county. As soon as they, as soon as the district attorney accepts the charges, we transport them down there.
Anyone else?
There are different requirements for a jail cell where they're going to stay more than 48 hours than there are for municipal holding cells. These are municipal holding cells.
Jakey.
Would you be able to take this design and plan and put it on a different property?
Sure, absolutely.
Because I, I feel like that, that's going to be our biggest thing to overcome, to pass this to the public. But we can talk about that in a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, we could do that.
That's good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So Ike was in 2008. The building was built in 1996. That's 12-year life. I'm not part of the people in 96 who built it, but, so now it's got a 28-year life because it's currently being used, and Ike was in 2008, and it's 2024, that's 28 years. So if you, and we've been talking about this for about a year. The communication is poor. We've talked about it in council, but the people haven't heard about this. So when you throw something at the people, I mean, the citizens, that all of a sudden, hey, we have to have a new police station, which I walked around with Chief Nelson, by the way, we walked through the whole place, I agree. But you're not going to sell that to the people because the communication has been poor for the seven years I've been on council because no one's talked about it. All of a sudden, now you got to have it. They already voted on it, no. So now we're bringing it back, and I'm, I'm already hearing from the people, no, we're not going to do it. I think we, we should, but you got to make it last longer. And I brought this story up about 50 times, and I'm going to bring it up one more time. My dad was born in 1916. He went to high school from 1931 to 1935. The building was built at the turn of the century. If you go to that high school right now, there's people there because the school's still open. So that's 124 years that school's been open. So that's what people expect to get out of it, not 12 years or maybe 28. And I don't see this above, you know, at any, you know, above ground, like we're not building it up or anything. I don't know. I mean, will, what if we have another Ike? Will it flood? And then we go, oh, yeah, we need a new one. That's what the people are thinking about. They've already said that. So, you know, again, I would be for it, but I can already tell you the people are against it. That's, and I know we need it, but that's what you're dealing with.
Well, I agree with you, Joe, in terms of people, but I, I think we failed in the fact that we didn't give a full explanation as to why and wherefore of it. We made an assumption that everybody understood. But if you want to vote it down, I mean, that's your call, but you're not telling just us, you're telling PD. And what the chief said is, and you saw the pictures, you can go to work in A, you can go to work in B, pays the same. Because you're telling your first responders, you're in a flood zone, we know it, and, you know, we call 911, and we have another storm surge like Ike, nobody can come. And, and who would drive their car and park it where it's going to flood? How many people would go to work that day? Say, oh gee, boss, I can't make it. But the first responders, they got to be there. But it's, you know, it's going to be up to the people if you want a PD. And it's not just to the citizens, but it's also the business community. Who's going to come here and invest money into a business knowing that if there's a storm surge, our PD may or may not be able to respond when your, your, your security system because of power failure is gone?
Go ahead, Rob.
It is, speaking of location, the, the flood map showed us that if it's on the other side of 146, the, that is something that you can never not worry about, but it's much less of a concern. When we look at alternate locations that the city owns, because remember, if we don't own the property, that 15 becomes 17 or 18 or something like that. When we look at alternate locations that the city owns, I am not aware of any that would accommodate the footprint, although I very well may be wrong about it. The location proposed solves the flood problem, leaves the city staff here, leaves the courts here. We're not abandoning this building by any means. We'll still be using this building for another 10 or 20 years. It's not like we're only going to get 32 years of life out of it, but we've outgrown it. 74% growth in just the police force. Those who commented earlier about we're not going to grow a whole lot more because we've run out of land, I'm not sure I agree with that. There's still a lot of residential zoned land on the north side of town. There's still people talking to the city about what they can do with that land. We have, uh, the Seabrook Town Center coming in. We have other facilities. There's, there's, of course, five o'clock somewhere, I can never remember, Margaritaville, and another one further at the east, west end of Seabrook, that have all been approved in the last two years and are coming here. I, I cannot imagine that the city won't continue to grow, and we're already strapped, strapped right now as far as the space. This is something that we have to consider. If there is another location on the west side of 146, out of the flood zone, that would accommodate the space, let's talk about it. But if that space isn't there, we only have one choice.
Mayor, there's, there is one space on, on Repstorff, right behind the Valero that Bill Frederick owns that's for sale. It's right by the apartments, right by NASA, you know, that would be a great place if we could
I'm saying the space
Look into it.
I'm saying the space that the city owns.
Right.
So if we talked about that space, now we're looking at 17 to 18 million. And how much are people willing to pay for that? So since we own that property, it, it helps manage the cost of it, gets us where we need to be for the next 20 or 30 years.
Well, we can do something else with the property that we have. I mean, have we even explored that one? You know what I'm talking about, behind Valero? I don't know how many acres it is, but...
No, I mean, with the current floor plan, no. I mean, we'd have to get with the architect and see.
Well, he said it could be, that design could be at another location. So I, I would like to, I'm going to have a hard sell with this, to be honest, and especially from the amount of people that have spoke up about the location and dislike the location. It's going to be a hard sell.
Is a hard sell based on the cost, the need, or the, or the location?
Location, I'd say, is the biggest at this point.
Location?
Yes.
John, do you know offhand if that's in the flood zone, that property? I believe it is. That property is in the flood zone.
It, you're saying it is or is not?
It is in the flood zone.
What was the difference in the size and the, and the one that we did last year and this one? This is 22,000 square feet. What was the one that we did before?
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Gale, do you remember?
36,000.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. So there's a police station at the corner of Bay Area Boulevard by Clearlake High School, elementary school, junior high school, University of Houston, several churches. So I'm trying to figure out why the issue with, with the location, since the city owns that piece of property, we have to go out and buy another piece of property, we're going to add a significant amount to this amount that we're trying to pass in this bond. So I certainly would love to hear what, what the specific reasons are that we're negative about the location.
There's a, that's a high-traffic area. I mean, I can't imagine cop, police having to speed off and leave, and there's all this, there's a roundabout for one. I mean, it just seems like there's a lot going on right there. I don't really know what you're, what area you're talking about on Bay Area.
Well, Clearlake, next to Clearlake High School.
Okay.
Okay, so Clearlake High School, then down Foggin Pass, there's an elementary school, a junior high school, and a church, and University of Houston across the street. So there's lots of education, and we never had a problem there. That area is
Okay.
That area has been secure, and it seems like really everybody is welcome, especially businesses are welcome, the fact that that station is there. Just curious.
That's on a squela, but, so my question is, going back to this, how high is this above sea level? Like, you know, I know you have to make kind of a pad to pour cement and all that, like, so where does that raise it to? Do you know, do you have that number?
It's out of the 100-year flood plan, and our intent was to build it to two to three feet above that. So it would, it's, you know, it's not 500-year, but it's a 100-year flood plan.
So, so it'd be close to 17, I think, because I, I moved in my house in 2007, and we had Ike, and we had no water to my house at all. It didn't even come up to the, it barely came up to the sidewalk. I mean, and so, and that's kind of, my house is literally right down the street from there. And I, I think it's a good thing to have the police department there. I understand your issues with the schools and all that, yes. It's concerning, too, but I'm kind of open for another option as well. But I, I think we need to consider this, and I think I also agree that we need to have two separate bonds. If we're going to do one for the pool and one for this, they should be broken out. That's just my opinion, so.
One more question. It is, so Chief, have you looked at egress and egress of the police station? If, if we're concerned about cars, police cars leaving in a hurry and lights on and so forth, is that going to, have we been able to secure an area for that to happen?
At the proposed location?
Yes.
I've looked at it. The amount of traffic at various times of the day doesn't seem to be that overburdensome. Certainly not any more so than leaving out of here because we've got that intersection with NASA and 146 and
And elementary schools next door.
Oh, no, no. I mean, we have had to leave here during, you know, school ingress or egress, but we haven't had any issues, and I wouldn't anticipate any over there.
Thank you.
Yes.
By the way, Gale, refresh my memory, it's state law that we have to separate the two bond issues, isn't it?
That's correct, right. So your propositions
Never intended to be together.
No.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
I think, again, that goes to communication, the way people see it, that it was, that's why. People see it a certain way, the way it's written, and people assume that they were together. I knew they were going to be separated, but people don't see it that way. And it should have been, we have a bond on this, and then space, we have a bond on this. Just
I, I would hold that the communication that has been lacking over the last four years that I've been on council is the responsibility of us as council members, not just the city. So when we say the citizens don't know what's going on, it's our fault, not theirs. And, and we need to stop blaming the staff for things that's our responsibility. And yes, there's been, it's something we have to get better at. You don't see a problem until it's presented to you, and it's clearly been presented, and we're trying to improve communication. But we are where we are, so we have to get better. But that's on us to do, not on city staff.
We also have a Department of the Public Affairs and Media. I mean, they have a full-time job for communication, so it shouldn't just be on our, us as volunteers. I try to, I mean, I think we all try to do that, but I mean, we do have paid positions that are taxpayers are funding for them to get the word out. And I don't think the word has been gotten out, I'm sorry, my voice has gone, has been communicated well. Maybe we need to have a, you know, a city hall meeting about just this.
Thank you. I, I have a couple of thoughts. Gale, could you go back to the site plan for just a second? So in a police facility, there aren't very many patrol cars that are at the police facility. They're all out on patrol as a general purpose. So if there's an emergency, there really aren't cars that are speeding off from the police department. They're out in the community, so there's that. If, if you look at the left-hand side of the, of the screen where all that parking is just to the left of that purple area, that is a, a, a six-foot-tall solid wall that has all the police cars and, and actually the police staff parking is in there. There's, 90% of this building is office space. It's, it's not a jail, so I just, you know, sometimes the perception of a police facility is there's cars with lights and sirens running all muck all over the place, and, and lots of convicts and things coming in. It's not the case. I mean, these people are, are not heavy offenders. If they are, they're going to the county. These are sort of minor offenders that are going to be kept overnight if that long before they're taken to the county. And if they are, they're coming in through this six-foot-tall solid compound, if you will, in the back, and they're coming in through a Sally Port where the doors close before the, that detainee that detainee ever gets out of the car and they're going through a booking, a room that's highly secure to get into the cells that they go in there. So the other thing I would mention about, you're talking about the expansion, the needs to expand this building. So if you look at the site plan here, there's room on three sides basically to expand that building, which gives you a longer lifespan of the building. You build a building too small to begin with and you don't have expansion capability, that's where you run into the problems that you have here. So there's the ability to expand horizontally on this site or any other site for that matter, if you just get a large enough site. So just wanted to add those few comments.
Anybody else? We appreciate it. Thank you very much. 2.3, presentation of a post-event report for Celebration Seabrook 2024. Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Gail, do you have my presentation? Apologize, I'm going to be as quick as possible and just do a brief recap for the Celebration Seabrook event that we had on October the 12th. We'll pull up some numbers here. So we did have a little lower attendance than we have in years past, which we're trying to brainstorm to figure out what may have been the cause of that, but just with a very little bit of research, found that we had nine other large live music and art-style festivals within our surrounding area this year on the same date, kind of at the same time from Galveston up to Conroe. And so I think that may have had some impact to it, but we're still looking into to see what else may have, may have happened there. However, the feedback that we got from those that did attend was all very positive, so that's always good to hear. As always, thank you to our sponsors. We had $45,500 in sponsorships from Cobb Finley, the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation, Gulf Winds, Port Houston, HS Development Group, Gulf Coast Limestone, the Seabrook Association, Lakewood Yacht Club, The Yard, Waste Management, Harris County Public Library, Alsepaus Boutique by Kelly Annett, Rotary Club of Seabrook, and Aspire Medical and Wellness. When we look at our vendors, we did have a decent increase in vendors. We actually ran out of space in the pavilion, under the pavilion this year, which was a nice problem to have. We extended, had to extend that a little bit. We had a total of 31 vendors with eight of those being merchants and 23 being artists, 11 residents, and 20 non-residents. Food vendors, we had a lot come back from previous years. I think some of our attendees enjoy coming and knowing kind of the same, the same food vendors will be there time and time again, but we also added Seabrook Cheese Company this year and Bad Chick's Hot Chicken, and hopefully you all got a chance to try that because I was smelling it all day and it was amazing. So looking at advertising, we kept it pretty under budget for advertising this year. We only spent $2,349 on our advertising. Probably could have spent a good bit more. We were trying to be as flexible as possible. And it's also difficult, we didn't start advertising until October 1st until the budget was approved and put in place to ensure that we actually did have the funding. But even with that, we did reach over 350,000 user accounts with 3.4,000 link clicks and over 4,000 engagements on each of those ad posts. Financial summary, we received 92% of the budgeted, of what we budgeted to receive, and we only spent 81% of the budgeted expenditures. So we did save a little bit of money overall. We didn't bring in quite as much as we hoped for, however, we did bring in more than last year and spent about the same. Looking year over year, with this year being on that far right-hand column, you can kind of see there, the numbers are very close to last year, but still considerably lower than 2002 and prior. And then hopefully we can save the date and plan for the second Saturday in October for 2025.
Thanks, Amanda.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah?
Can you go back a couple of slides? One to the advertising. Don't we give $50,000 for hot funds for this event?
We do. That goes into the overall, the event production and everything, so that's a part of our total budget for the event.
Doesn't, don't have, hot funds have to be spent for advertising? Am I mistaken? You can just spend it on anything?
I believe it can be spent for these kind of festivals and the arts.
Yeah, when we first, back in 2015, we kind of lent on TML and then Texas Lodging Association. So overall, the events bringing tourism to the area, that met the intent as well. So we did kind of go through legal to make sure that we were working within the guidelines of the hot funds.
Okay, and then can you go forward a couple of slides? Because we also, it says expenditures is 87,000, so there's 50,000 for meet, hot funds, and there's $100,000 out of the budget. That's $150,000. What am I missing here?
So we were, we were under budget by, I believe the total percent that we were under was 19%, and I'll go back and look at that. And I have a very detailed spreadsheet that I didn't upload here because it would have been so small, but I'm more than happy to share that with anyone that would like to see that.
The numbers don't, plus you had $45,000 in sponsors. I mean, this doesn't add up, and I've always been curious to know more details about this.
So the revenue line, that is the total, that's everything that came in. And then the 87,000, that's everything that was spent. And so that difference is the 13,000.
So we made $13,000?
Correct. That would be what was, what was remaining.
Okay. This just, this math just still doesn't make sense to me. If you could please email all of council, all the details on that, I would...
Not a problem.
This thing, do you have a number of heads and beds that you guys were able to?
We had four room nights that I know confirmed. We did get hotel discount codes or booking codes from two of our local hotels. I have not personally reached out yet to follow up on that. That is on my list of things to continue to do, though.
Yeah, I thought that was kind of a requirement when you get hot funds. I just don't see why the city's not held the same.
Yeah, ultimately, that is the goal for heads and beds. We want, we want folks to come in and stay in Seabrook for this event and for all of our events.
But I'm saying people that get the hot funds are required to come back with a post-report telling council how many heads and beds they had and all that. So we had four that you know of, right?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
Is that part of the requirement?
Is that not?
I don't think it's a requirement. It's a recommended component.
The heads and beds?
In the final report...
When we give hot funds to any organization and they give their final report, just like you did, the, the heads and beds tally is something we've struggled with up here for years. And not everyone reports it when they do their final report because that data is so hard to quantify. I don't believe it's a requirement for the after-event report. It is obviously a recommended item, but not a requirement.
It's a requirement going in, so I think the expectation is that we'll see some type of proof that you put a head and bed in that report, yes.
Okay, again, communication on that because I'm on the same page going, hey, I have to have heads and beds. So I keep hearing that a million times. But anyway, so here's my point of it. 50,000, and the people get to see this because they're paying attention. So 50,000 from hot tax and 100 and whatever thousand to, from general funds to a one-day party the city puts on. They have a problem with that. They've told me. Why is the city doing this? Why is the city putting this on? Now, they like it, but they say, why can't a civic group do it? Why isn't there a civic group that, you know, gets the hot fund money? The city can help out by putting the fencing around, getting waste management to put the porta-potties up, and, you know, they set it up. You have some guidelines of what you'd like, the city does, but then let the civic group do it. I don't understand why the city's putting on a one-day party. And the citizens look at that going, wow, there's 107,000 and, you know, all this money? That's how they look at it and they just, I don't know how to explain it to them that well. I'd be going, well, that's, since I got on council, that's what they done. So anyway.
Yeah, and just to kind of give a little bit of historical, so in 2014, 15, city council went into a strategic planning session and that's kind of where this came from. The old festival that used to be at the festival grounds on the north side of town, the council at the time wanted to bring back a iconic festival to the city. We had small-city events, and so that's where this was all kind of birthed from. It was completely originating from the council at the time, so, you know, obviously priorities change, councils change, and, but that's where this originated from, bringing that back to the 1980s, 1990s festival we used to have.
Anybody else? Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you.
2.4, presentation of a quarterly update of the Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department. Chief.
Good evening. Nathan Douglas, Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department. Thank you for entertaining my audience here and I hope to bring a little positivity and humor. I do not have a nice presentation. I just shopped from the hip today. I did make a couple of notes so we could talk about a couple of things. First and foremost, calls year-to-date are about 1,000 incidences, with about 45% of them being fire-related incidences and about 55% being medical emergencies and those types of rescues. That's where we stand right now. So we'll project it to probably do 1,200 this year, which is in line with what we've done the past two or three years. Everybody likes to hear about some of the calls, so I have a couple I'd like to talk about. We had two incidences on the Seabrook Trails, which, on a personal note, I love our Seabrook Trails, and if you're not aware, the Bay Area, it's a well-known through the Bay Area. And if you walk the trails and visit with people, they're coming from all sorts of communities coming here, coming here. And a lot of it's about interconnectivity and things of this nature. So one of the reasons I know that is the patients we've picked up off the trails. And the reason that's important to y'all and the citizens is that public safety fund that Fire Marshal Kevin Rogers manages and you ultimately approve the funds. We've actually used equipment this month from those funds to rescue these people. And both those calls, one of them was not so serious, it would be serious if it happened to you, but you broke your tib fib in your foot, basically broke your foot, but you can't exit those trails when that happens to you. So we have that side-by-side, we have a trailer that actually holds a Stokes basket. We are able to go in there, help rescue the people with EMS by our side and bring them out of the trail system to the waiting ambulance. So we got to do that twice. One of them was a very serious call where a lady was found unconscious on the trails from a bicycle accident by another trail member or citizen walking the trails. So I just wanted to let you know, those vehicles were approved years ago, but we still have them, we keep them in service, and when you need them, they're there and they're very important, and it's really what y'all did. We also had a major fire, I'm sure you're aware of, on Cortana Roo. The good news of that fire was the box alarm assignment that I touched on about was activated, responded accordingly. Our response time was good, lots of firemen, nothing besides that house burned. Nobody likes a pile of rubble at the end of that story, but the good news is the homeowners were not injured, nobody was hurt, they were home when the incident occurred, and they are fully insured. So they'll work through those issues. Probably one of the reasons for that fire being so intense and massive was the exterior of the house, if you'd ever seen it and driven down Cortana Roo, was made of all cedar. So it's basically a modern-day log cabin and it went south from there. But, so that's kind of what happened there. If you have any questions about that, before I move on to a couple of other fire prevention items that I have.
Did you find a cause, Chief?
So we don't do cause and origin. Kevin does, but we worked with Kevin. The official ruling is undetermined, but if you would like to say a couple of words.
So when the, when the house collapsed, that made it impossible for us to safely go in and figure out. We have an area of origin. The insurance company was working on that and they have also determined it to be undetermined at this time.
Thanks, appreciate it.
I would like to say, tell me if I'm wrong, that house was elevated, which creates a void underneath, which is all air.
That didn't, that didn't help the progression of the fire. There's a five-foot crawl space underneath the house, so that pushed the fire to the back. Luckily, when the back end collapsed, the crew, we were able to get them out and then it became an offensive fire, or defensive fire.
And I think that origin would have been like the equivalent of a garage. They called it a basement at grade level where they kept all their tools and, you know, gas appliances and NiCAD batteries and all these things. But sometimes you just can't determine it because, well, the extent of the fire. So NiCAD batteries start fires, too, so.
We appreciate it, Chief.
Okay, we're moving into the holidays season, which is a huge public relations event for us, as you can imagine, from Christmas tree-lining ceremonies to the arrival of Santa Claus and all the events that we participate in. So we're looking forward to that. Lots of time spent in the fire department and all your volunteers out in the community, as you can imagine. Have a couple of pointers for everybody in the audience and of course, city council. And I think we're now airing on YouTube or at least rebroadcasted, I believe, is that true? So I know people that tell me they watch this. Couple of important things. We had our fallback time change. You should always check your batteries and your smoke detector and change all of them, even if they're not chirping. Many people don't know this, and when we respond to their houses, their smoke detectors are very old in their house and they have a born-on date. Every single smoke detector you pull off has a date it was born on and they are guaranteed for 10 years. You should replace them if they're 10 years or older. So those are two things that you should really consider doing. You should check your fire extinguisher to make sure it's good, valid. If not, recharge it or buy a new one. That's very important. Be very careful doing the turkeys that people do. Don't put frozen ones in the grease or whatever, the peanut oil.
Don't do it inside.
Don't do it inside. We do make calls for service that are very holiday-related, from ornaments to cooking and all sorts of things. And this one is a little dear and dear to our hearts here. I don't like to tell long-waisted stories, I try to make it as brief as I can. For everybody in the audience, it's very important to update your alarm company contacts. So if you pay for a service and have a, what we'll call a burglar alarm, fire alarm, in your house, that could have been installed 10, 20, 30 years ago. It's very important that you call them, especially since you pay for it, and ask them, what phone numbers are you calling when I press the emergency button? They call them panic alarms, the fire alarm, the EMS, or the police. And some of our neighboring communities, all three of those numbers are different. We're fortunate as Seabrook residents, it's one number. But for those of you who don't know, when you press that alarm or your alarm activates, they don't call 911. That service goes to a call center somewhere in this country and it's just somebody behind a computer looking at your address and going off a computer screen. So what we've had happen is when your salesman comes out there, they really have no idea where Seabrook is and they really don't know who responds here. And they put accidental information in there, they put wrong information in there, or the numbers change. So we've had a change in numbers here probably, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, and I can guarantee you, there's people who bought alarms in the 80s and 90s and they still have the same numbers. We had an incident before COVID, if you remember the Ms. McNair's house fire, it made national news, it was in El Lago. When I was the first one to arrive there, it was 5:00 in the morning, thank goodness she was okay. The quick story is this, she tells me immediately, what took you so long to get here? That stuck with me and after everything was finished, we did an investigation. So this is proof of what happened here. We tracked all the way down, the alarm company received the fire alarm in the house, actually called the house and woke her up. They called the fire department based on the numbers they had on their computer and they called Harrison County. Harrison County is in the panhandle of Texas. And I actually talked to the dispatch supervisor who had the recording of the call and actually knew exactly when it came in, exactly what happened, and this is what she told me. Every day, every hour, 24/7/365, we take calls from Harris County and Harrison County. So Harrison County takes this house fire call, transfers it to the Harris County Sheriff's Office, which is a huge call center on the north side of Houston, who types in an address, sends it to Webster, who Webster says, well, that's not us, I don't know who that is. They send it to Pasadena, and then Pasadena, oh, that's Seabrook, and call Seabrook. By the time that transpired, 22 minutes had passed, and then we're alerted and responded immediately. So these are very real problems because alarm companies don't call 911. They call 10-digit numbers and then have to go through phone prompts today because everybody has a phone prompt. So it's a very long process. process, and it's important that you make sure you have the right numbers, which I believe here is 5610, 281, 291, 5610, and you get all three here. But you have to go through phone prompt to get them. So it's important that we check that. So just a little friendly fire safety advice that nobody even thinks about, and a real event. So, I'm done. Anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions, council? Thanks, chief.
We will see you out and about in the city, and if not, then I'll see you next year.
Appreciate it. Thanks, chief.
December 14th, rain update, December 21st.
3.0, discussion. 3.1, receive a presentation from the city's financial advisor and discussion regarding the associated and add alarm tax implications, issuance and timing of a May 2025 bond election, governing the reconstruction of the municipal pool, and the construction of a new police station.
Mayor and council, unfortunately, John Roebuck is fallen ill tonight, and he's not going to be able to join us. So Mike and I met. The attachment is with the agenda tonight. We can run through just the initial analysis for the preliminary numbers that we have for the two projects. And then later on in the agenda, this was structured just to put all of this forward to see what council's decision is as far as moving forward. So we'll run through this. Mike and I are going to kind of tag-team. This was prepared again by our financial advisor to kind of show the rolling interest rates and where we're at in the current market. So they're going to estimate about 4.25% in the models that you'll see. The brightly colored chart that you have here is one depiction of all of the city's different debt obligations. So at the bottom, I know in the monitor, public monitors, it might be a little difficult to see, but over time, this is how a city does pay for your capital, large capital expenditures. So dating all the way back to 2003 to current, this lists all the obligations, and then when they retire. This is the breakdown of the city's tax rate. So on the blue portion, when we go through the budget process, we talk about the operations and maintenance, or the O&amp;M, and then in the red, we talk about the debt portion of the tax rate. You add those two together, and that's your total tax rate. So looking back from 2015 to date, we've been as high as 18. Our current debt rate is about 10, and our current tax rate is .455. In this synopsis that John put together, we looked at three scenarios. Whatever propositions, if any, proceed to the May bond election. We have at the far left, scenario one, which is the estimate that the architect gave you of $15,000 for a municipal complex, or excuse me, a police station. Scenario two, right now, is our best estimate for a complete reconstruction of Pelican Municipal Pool. And then scenario three is adding if both of those propositions were put forward for $18 million. The second section of this table shows you where we're currently at in blue, which is our current debt rate. 26, taxure 25 would be, in each one, the respective columns, the rate and what that would do to the debt portion of your section of the tax rate. So 10 cents, this would, at the very bottom, you can see, be about 4.7, rounded about 5 cents. So it would add 5 cents to the debt portion of it. One thing I'm going to show or let Mike kind of drive here in a minute, is we do have quite a bit of our debt that's coming off in the next year and a half. So Mike's put together a separate sheet to kind of walk you through, and hopefully I pulled up the right one, Mike. I did not. Hold on. See if I can find it.
Well, if not, we, essentially, we have four debt issues coming that will be retired. Two, the 2003 and the 2013 will be retiring in 2025, meaning we'll have no more obligations to pay back on those bond issues. And I believe the other one is 2010 and 2017, I believe, that will expire or retire in 2027. Those amounts total $3 million from 2025 through 2027. And what I was trying to show with my, with my slide was that the correlation between, you know, the, even though we jump up to 15 cents in '26 and '27, will immediately kind of come back down, you know, there to 13 cents if we, you know, under the $18 million scenario, and then continue to drop as those, as those bonds retire. So that's all I was wanting to show on that, on that slide.
So we've got the three scenarios that John put together in the more spread-out sheet here. So I just jumped for scenario three for discussion purposes of the 18 million. So please, if you would like to see one or two, I'll flip back. Again, kind of focusing on what the highest impact would be for both, would be about 5 cents. Again, what Mike says, John's run it out to 2050, so you can see that ultimately, if we took no further capital improvements using a debt tool, we'd be back down to 5 cents at some market, about 2050. So, again, debt is a way for some of the larger projects, for municipality to be able to, to pay for those. The bond election, and the reason for bringing all this information forward, there's many steps in a bond package. This is just the beginning. So we had previously brought to council, if we wanted to further engage with the architect that was approved, and so this was the update to bring back to council to let you know. We're about the halfway mark for the architectural contract at this point. This information from, that was put together for John, is the calendar. So it shows you that if, in February, this would come back to council for an ordinance, at the ordinance level, you will see the proposition language as an exhibit. So it will show, just like we did in November of 2023, you had a fire truck, you had an EMS station, you had the facility that was on there. And so it's all broke up as state law requires. February will be the time, if council wants to proceed with this, we'd have the first deadline, the first February meeting to come back, to put this on ordinance to call for an election. From there, if this were approved, we'd have a canvas of the election results, 30-day period, and then a bond sale wouldn't happen until probably July, and then a closing into August 25. So kind of going back to our original presentation, if council wanted to move this forward, you're looking at constructing a municipal facility all in about three years. So it really gets down to planning and what your, you know, what your goal is of, and if it is to move your police station, it is sort of a process from beginning to end and a timetable. So again, apologies that John was not able to join us tonight. I'll stop there. Again, this item was put on purely for the purpose to get some direction from council. If you want to move forward with these propositions, we need to get some direction from council as far as engaging the architect further, stopping the contract, direction. We will be coming back on the municipal pool, so we have engaged an architect. The last report that you received on the pool was approximately, to bring everything up to code, you're looking at $800,000 on the municipal pool. We do have the $3 million mark that we've had preliminary conversations. We also were looking to find an architect that could give some kind of facade renovation, so that if council decided to put 3 million into a reconstructed pool, we could do some type of facade entrance upgrade. The two buildings, we've met with multiple architects, the 1960s buildings that encompass around the pool, the only restroom that we have, again, speaking to our FEMA issues, we are not going to be able to touch those buildings without triggering that we'd have to go 15 feet in the air. So the recommendation from most of our architects that we talked about is leaving the restrooms, the 1960s buildings with small upgrades, and then if council wanted to dress up the entrance, we could still look at that. So, any questions?
Any questions, council?
Okay, the 700,000 you mentioned, that, that was for bringing the existing pool repairs, et cetera. But if I understand correctly, there was no guarantee that it would last anytime at all. Is that correct?
Right. There's a lot of underground work. We've got major leaks that were established when we went through the study process. So I think it was a 10, maybe a 10-year guarantee at that point, after we invested that much.
Mayor, if you're looking for direction from council, and this is my opinion, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I really would like for us to be able to look at the property behind Valero, if that's an option.
My question is on the, we're, we're voting for 3 million on, or not voting, but put it on a bond election. I haven't seen a drawing of what the new pool would look like.
And that, that's part of what I'm here tonight. I need to get some direction. We have the architects that are going to come back and show you the renderings. What we wanted to also be able to show you is, if we can't touch the 1960s building, I would assume that council's going to want to know what the cost would be to dress up the entrance with the investment that you're going to put behind there. So we were trying to give you two components, and we will be bringing back those designers to go step-by-step of what they put together.
And, Gail, if I remember correctly from reading the attachments, the, the architect that we're contracting with specifies in the contract of forming a roughly 10-person committee.
That's, that, later on the agenda, that's Bayside Park.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, that's Bayside Park.
Yeah, Bayside Park. And again, I mean, we are just trying to get a little bit of direction. These are some current photos. We've shocked the pool. Obviously, there's some major cleaning. Once the slide came down, we've got a, a pretty big void area. So whichever direction that we go and council decides, we most likely would need to look at some type of capital funding to get this back into compliance and ready for the next season, if we were to stay where we're at, or if we continue, want to look at a reconstruction.
Okay, so what you're looking for is, do you want to proceed, do you want council to say, yes, let's proceed to the next step, and that would bring the architects in, which would make the presentation and finalize the money. But at this stage, just to say, yes, we'd like to go forward and find out a little bit more. It's not approving the bond issue to go forward or anything like that.
Correct. Right. So we have until February to call the election, and once you call the election, from February to May, then you go into a heavy education period. So those open houses, those virtual open houses, to educate the public on what the buildings, what the pool, all of those, like we did in November of 2030, will go into play after the election is called.
Okay. So this is just to get to the next step.
Right. So we do have, like I said, the architect for the, or the police station is halfway through his contract. I didn't want to engage him further if council wants to not proceed with this, and that's the reason, bringing this forward.
Yeah. I thought we had discussed the fact that, you know, we, we found some major leaks under the coping of the pool and under the decks, and that it would be more reasonable to kind of start from scratch and do something with, with the pools themselves. And I thought that number was a lot more than the $3 million number. Am I mistaken?
Though, the cost-benefit analysis for the 800,000 was if we stayed with the current pools and tried to get them, do all the underground work and bring everything back up. Everything's underground, so it would basically be them ripping everything up, putting in new pipes, new filtrations, getting us back up to code. But essentially, what you're looking at here, minus some cleanup, we don't touch this. So the pool, minus the slide, with no improvements to the pool is what we would be left with. We can certainly do it. That quote was about $800,000 from the, the company that did the feasibility study.
Okay, I have a question. Now I'm more confused. Drives me crazy. Okay. I thought council gave you direction with that company, which we still haven't seen a report from them. I don't know why. Why has it taken so long? That's one question. We said, we already know we weren't going to fix this because of all the stuff underground. So we thought this was going to be removed out and start fresh. So I'm thinking it's a $3 million pool. Is this not correct? Where am I wrong there?
I, I don't know until you fund a project. Are you wanting to, $3 million from the general fund?
$3 million bond is what we're possibly looking at. Wow, this is even more confusing. Okay, start over. We know that we're not going to use this pool the way it's current. Can't use it. It's got way too many leaks. We've gotten two presentations on that. So I thought we gave you direction to remove that whole pool. We were waiting on, and during that time, we were waiting on this new conceptual drawing of what the new pool could look like. I haven't seen that.
So your capital, whatever direction that city council decides, your demolition of the pool will be part of that project. So we will do a demolition plus a new construction. We just need to get direction from council. Do you want to move forward with this project?
Wow, I thought we agreed to that back like in June, May, April this year.
So the aquatic...
I, I thought we talked about the feasibility of it, and comparing the prices of repairing the current pool versus replacing the pool. And then that came back to us. We said, okay, we need to replace the pool. And so then they started talking about numbers on it so that we could get it to a bond, because we can't write a $3 million check.
Right.
I'm, I'm not clear on what you're, where you're confused on.
So you agree, we already agreed that we're not going to keep this pool. We're, you know, we already agreed on that. It was a long time ago. That was back in like March, April of this year, because we didn't even open up for this summer.
So the last time we spoke about the pool, it was to determine the estimated value and to contract to see what would be the requirements of removing the pool and everything else, so that they could give us a value so that we could determine feasibility to go forward. What they gave us today was it's going to cost about $3 million to get the pool that you want, and, and comply with FEMA and everything else. So what we're talking about giving guidance on is, yes, let's go ahead and move forward, because we haven't paid for the design stage yet.
I'm confused too, because I thought we did pay for that designer to come in, and he was going to give us an option with, option one, brand-new pool, option two, brand-new pool, splash pad, option three...
That's correct. That's correct. You, you did, and that's what we're waiting on. The picture that you have up right now, this is the reason for delay. We got an on-call professional services additional architects on board, and I guess what I'm looking for is from council. If you're fine with investing $3 million plus behind this, and we keep this the same, I need that direction.
I say yes.
It's my opinion, if we're going to spend $3 million on a pool, it needs to look like a pool. It needs to look like we spent that on it, which means that facade has to be updated to some extent. And, and where the balance is between the final pool design and the design of that facade, that's going to be a whole lot of input from the city, from the citizens, and how we come across to that decision.
At this time, we do not have any idea what it would cost to, to give it a different facade on the 1960 buildings. That's correct?
No, we didn't. We just went through several meetings with architects to figure out if we could do anything with the existing buildings. The FEMA requirements have us dead in the water. We can't, there's very little we can do to it. So one of the architects came up with the idea of building some type of wall, fence, facade, that would make at least the entrance more appealing and look different. They're keeping the restrooms in the older buildings the way that they are with minor updates. That would be the less expensive, and we wouldn't trigger the FEMA requirements of having to elevate anything.
It seems to me that we should put it all in one package, rather than...
Right, and that's the delay. I mean, to Council McCall, I think that is what we were, internally, we were talking, coming back with the plan from the architect with option one, two, and three, and not giving you a reasonable option four of touching the facade, didn't seem like it would be reasonable if you're going to make a 3 to $4 million investment. So we just wanted to look at a facade, bring that forward at the same time he's going to present all three of the options. And again, we, after that meeting that council had, they did, if you recall, we had a community survey. So they've gathered all the community survey information, and the three options that they've come up with is what he will present.
The only other point I wanted to make, as far as the police station is concerned, I support it. I also support the idea that we ought to look at all the other locations, do a pro and con for those locations, and see if that's even feasible or not. And it may give us our answer that we're looking for. may give us our answer that we're looking for. Thanks.
Okay. So, Council, I guess what I'm hearing is you want, you want Gail to move forward, city move forward, looking at the, the pool plus the facade, all in one package. Is that correct?
Yes. I thought that's what we were doing all along.
Well, we didn't, the facade didn't, wasn't in play at the beginning. That's what-
I mean, if it's not doable because of FEMA, then it's-
When we started, we were just talking about the pool, the splash pad, et cetera, but not the facade. But because of other requirements, the facade is now coming into play. So it's just an unexpected, you know?
Well, it does need a little redo. I mean, new carpeting, new paint, I mean, little-
I agree. I mean, I think if we're going to refresh it, we need to refresh it.
Tonight, all we're talking about is the new city guidance to move forward with the pool, maintain the facade as an option, move forward with the police station, but investigating other properties and providing us-
Turn the mic off.
We can't hear y'all when y'all-
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Tonight, on this agenda item, all we're talking about is giving Gail and city staff guidance to move forward with the pool with the facade as an option, which is going to be a price tag associated with it, and move forward with the police station, but provide an analysis of other properties that would fit that footprint, and the impact on the bond of changing that location. Is that correct?
Let me, let me ask one more question of the architect. Did he leave? I just kind of checked, that, that property is about 2.3 acres in, in the flood zone, behind Valero. So we're not, first of all, 2.3 acres isn't enough. Second of all, we're just moving it into another flood zone, wouldn't make sense. So-
Let's see numbers on it.
So let's, let's see other locations.
We've looked at it before, but if we compare apples to apples.
Okay.
I mean, how do they build across the street and not, and get up with the retirement community?
Okay.
You know?
They'll pull up numbers on it.
Okay, very good. Gail, you got it, you got instructions, okay. 4.0, the consent agenda. 4.1, approve the minutes of the November 7, 2024 joint workshop session and the November 7, 2024 regular city council meeting. Moved to approve the consent agenda?
Exactly.
All in favor? Thank you. 5.0, boards and commissions. 5.1, consider to take all appropriate action on five appointments to the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation, with two members' terms to expire on January 1, 2026, and three member terms to expire on January 1, 2027. So, let me get the list. Okay, we have, yeah, okay. Got them up there? Okay. Not exactly. Well, how does council want to do this? You want to do, want to do the-
Get the recommendations. I have a lot to say before we vote.
Get the recommendations, interviews.
On, on the, you want to do the one-year terms or the two-year terms first?
Just under the recommendations table.
Okay. What is your recommendation?
I prepared a speech, it's going to be a couple minutes long. Do you want to go first, Tom?
I'm trying to hear.
I said I prepared a speech, it's going to be a couple minutes long. Do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. Really appreciate all the people that came in and put your applications in. It can't stop. We need the public and the citizens to represent the city. We definitely need to take a look at going forward and how we, and how EDC operates. I agree with all of those comments that have been made. I encourage as many of the applicants that can come forward in the future. I would request and encourage all to please, when you have a commission that you're interested in, go to the meetings, get involved, so that the first day that you, that you hit the ground running, in January 1, that you are ready to contribute to that commission. Really important. So thank all the applicants, for sure.
And what are your recommendations?
Recommendations. Paul Dunphy, two years. Do you want me to go on?
Yeah, for the whole list.
Paul Dunphy, two years. Terry Chapman, two years. Ann Whacker, two years. Gary Bell, one year. Summer Sanford, one year.
Okay.
Oh, you changed it a little bit. Okay. Again, I'd like to, I was very impressed with all the new applicants. We had six new applicants, and all five current EDC members reapplied. And I'd like to remind council that you guys gave me pushback when I wanted to consider term limits. Your reason was for lack of participation, and that is certainly not a concern now. The amount of new applicants signifies that the community wants change, and they have stepped up to provide it. The five members that reapplied, that have been serving on EDC for the following amount of time, Paul Dunphy, 12 years, Terry Chapman, 12 years, Gary Bell, 11 years, Kevin Ferguson, seven years, Ann Whacker, two years. While I do sincerely appreciate the time that they have served and volunteered, I think that most have lost the drive and motivation that these, the new candidates have. I believe EDC needs a new approach, and to get that, we need new people. I would suggest keeping one highly experienced member, and I would recommend that to be Terry Chapman. He has lived in Seabrook the longest since 1979, to be exact. He has the most historical knowledge and insight into the city's development. Next would be Jonathan Byers. He grew up in Seabrook. He's a commercial realtor. He knows a lot of property owners, business owners, promotes Seabrook businesses, and he couldn't be more perfect for this position. Andrew Crochet, he's an engineer. He's lived in Seabrook 15 years. He's pragmatic, he's a visionary, and he recently got his feet wet serving on the charter review committee as the chair. I think he'd be an asset to EDC. Amy Salmonero, she works in business development. She's been, lived in Seabrook for 10 years. She's already a constant promoter of Seabrook businesses. She has high energy and inventive marketing ideas. My next would be Summer Sanford, founder of Women in Whiskey. She's lived here for four years, but is extremely invested in Seabrook. She's got a great personality and is well-connected and brings creative marketing ideas. The applicants I'm recommending are smart, educated, motivated, successful people. They have fresh ideas on how to market and engage with new current businesses. These candidates all know what Seabrook needs and desires: restaurants, retail, grocery, doctors' offices, urgent cares, revenue, to clean up some of the derelict businesses, to revamp our city. They are outgoing and enthusiastic. They aren't afraid to knock on doors and talk to people. They are highly networked, sales savvy, and well-established business professionals. We do not have a full-time EDC position on staff anymore, as we all know, so we are heavily relying on this committee to drive this. Remember, you guys kept saying that the EDC position isn't necessary because we are relying on our brokers, realtors, and the internet to bring business in. So to keep the same members on the committee because they're experienced makes absolutely no sense to me. I would say most residents haven't been overly satisfied about the economic development that's gone on in the city the past 12 years. And just because someone has served on the committee before and re-appeals, it shouldn't mean that they are rubber stamped and automatically get that position again. This what, this is what appears to have gone on for quite some time. This is what I'd like to call the good old boys' club, and it needs to stop. This is exactly what happened at our last council meeting with planning and zoning. We had four spots to fill, six new applicants, three members, plus three members reapplied. With that many new applicants, it should tell you the community desires change. Instead of giving an opportunity to some of those qualified candidates, you rubber stamped the three that reapplied and only filled one spot with a new person. This was really disheartening to me, and I hope council does better tonight. I have no doubt with the new applicants that I'm recommending that they are more than capable of learning the ins and outs of EDC, the rules and the laws. I do not think this will take them long. They have, we'll have one highly seasoned EDC member, the mayor, also a council member, city staff, to rely on and to reach out to. This isn't rocket science. There's no reason to keep re-electing the same people for decades. Our citizens deserve better. So with that, I'm asking the council to be, to please stay objective and unbiased, and consider my recommendation for change. I'm suggesting Terry Chapman and Summer Sanford to expire in 2026, and Jonathan Byers, Andrew Crochet, and Amy Salmonero to 2027. I also would like to say, I hope that Tyler Cabana runs for council. And that's it. Runs for city council, and me. He's a great candidate.
Okay. We've heard the, anybody want to, go ahead.
I just have two questions I have to ask. You said, lost drive and motivation. Who are you thinking of when you said that? And the other question is, you won't change. Change to what? What, and not in general terms, like, we want to be better and we want to be great. No, but change to what specifically are you trying to achieve when you say change?
Well, some of the, the people that we interviewed that are already on EDC are tired. I mean, you guys are, if you're going to reappoint them until they cannot walk through this door, then that's what's going on here. They are tired, they, Gary, Paul Dunphy, and Kevin Ferguson, I think they are out of ideas, out of creativity. I think the new people, the change is bringing a new, fresh idea, bringing a different strategy on how to market things. They have ideas. No, their current members don't. They don't.
Just to add in, after, oh, several months ago, we had a number of people come before and address council and talk about Seabrook was, was negative for, for business. I reached out to them, asking them if they'd come before EDC and get specific. I put them on the agenda, and there were no shows. I'm currently working with one member of our community going over that, but at this point, there's nothing specific. There's nothing you can touch, feel, and smell and say, oh, this is what we need to correct. You're on record for saying you're opposed to apartments and opposed to warehouses. What are you going to put north of 146? You want to hire an EDC director, and that's great, but what are you going to tell them you're going to accept up there? Because these are your people if they get appointed. I mean, it's great to say, no, I don't want, but I think you need an alternative.
We can always do some, I mean, let's do some parks. We also could use some, just another strip center with some other, like lunch places, and like, be a perfect place for a little doctor's office and things like that. Not warehouses.
Let me ask that, I'm sorry, let me ask that question. I've been pushing for medical here for a long time. We thought we had a, a specific urgent care. It still may come, but they're still humming and hawing. But we're tied to, we just can't bring them. I mean, you know, we can do all the incentive we want to, but they look at our, the makeup of the city, they look at our, our population, they look for past traffic. It, it just doesn't come. We talk to thousands, I mean, at least hundreds, thousands maybe over. But I would like to, to know, when you interviewed these, these applicants, what were their ideas to bring those businesses here?
A lot of these applicants are a lot younger than the current people serving on the board. They're computer savvy, they're, they have different perspective on things.
I'm not, I'm not being negative, I just wanted, wanted to know-
Yeah, they-
-ideas were brought forth?
I mean, they have-
But they had a lot of ideas.
They do, they had, they had ideas. Gary's, or Gary for one, bless his heart, he, you know, that some of these people haven't been out to any of the businesses. And I think the only reason why they've been out there in the last six months is because we've been talking about it up here on the dais about needing to get out there. I mean, that's when I talked about it last April, about the position, you know, being vacant, and that we're not, we're not reaching out to our current businesses besides, which is that position, besides trying to get in new businesses, we're not even taking care of the ones here. So some of them have contacted on the phone. Some of them, they haven't actually gone out to, to the people, to, in front of them, and, you know, and I know that these candidates, Summer and Amy are actively doing that anyway. They're perfect for this.
So one of the things that I hear, and it goes back to that January meeting we had last year, when that lady from EDC came and spoke and said what, what, you know, businesses should be doing. There's, there's a whole bunch of, or what a city should be doing to encourage business. And what I heard her say, and what was actually happening, were two different things, in my opinion. You know, it said, not only are you trying to bring businesses in, you're trying to retain the businesses you've had. You know, I went by and talked to Chuck Bassoni, and one of the things that he said is, the last time someone from the city visited him was in the early 90s or late 80s when he put the new roof on his building. That was the last, he said, that anybody's talked to him from the city. And, you know, it was just an innocent conversation, you know, just talking about it. And he goes, well, no one from the city comes here like that. And, but, but that lady said that that's a really big deal to do. And so now I've been hearing that that's been happening, which is good. I'm glad. They, the EDC spent a lot of money to bring her in. The way I heard, it was pretty expensive to have her come in and be a consultant and talk about things. So that's what, that's what I, I hear from the citizens, and I'm hearing from Jackie, is, you know, we got to do these things, and, you know, is your infrastructure good? Yes, Seabrook can answer that, check that box. Are we business friendly? Well, I've heard no, others say yes. But I've talked to people, and they say, no, we're not as business friendly as we could be. You know, so there's a lot of things that we could improve on. I also know that there's certain businesses, and this is factual, that they, they put a tax on, it's a fee, to do business in Seabrook, because we used to have the police pull over the commercial vehicles. So if you were going to build a pool or something like that, they knew that their trucks were going to get hit, you know, because the, you know, the dump trucks or whatever. So there was a higher price to do a pool here than somewhere else. So, you know, and, and building guys were talking about that too. So it's just one of those things. So are, are we business friendly? Are we, we doing everything we could? And I think the people are saying no, but I hear from this, like, yeah, we are, we're in, in, but if that was the case, the bottom line is, because I always deal in bottom line, are you a good football official or are you a bad football official? Well, good ones work the Super Bowls. Well, I don't think we're a Super Bowl city. So that's just where I, I land it. And could there be room for improvement? The answer is yes. I think everybody knows that. So no one's trying to bash anybody because we're not, but we could get there.
Okay, that being said, we'll, we'll go down the list of applicants first. We'll, we'll, we'll pick five applicants, or vote on five, out of the, out of the group, and then we'll figure out their terms. Gary Bell, all in favor? All opposed? Jonathan Byers, all approved? All opposed? Terry Chapman, all approved? Andrew Crochet, Andrew Crochet, all approved? Four. Paul Dunphy? Kevin Ferguson?
He hears it.
Kevin Ferguson? Tyler Cabana? What's that last name? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Tyler.
Tyler Cabana? Joyce Routen? Salmaran, Amy Salmaran? Summer Sanford? Ann Whacker?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a vote count?
Summer Sanford has seven. Terry Chapman has seven. Ann Whacker has five. Ann Whacker has five. Paul Dunphy has five. And Andrew Croce has four. And those are your top five.
Okay. Our, our, our top five vote getters are Andrew Croce, Summer Sanford, Ann Whacker, Terry Chapman, Paul Dunphy. Now, what are their terms? Do I have a motion for the one-year term?
Listening.
I can.
Somebody can make a motion for just all of it. These two for one year and these three for.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion for the two, two candidates to serve two, two, uh, one-year term? Expiring January 2025, 26. We have a motion of these five.
I'm doing math. It takes me a minute.
We have Paul Dunphy, Andrew Croce, Ann Whacker, Summer Sanford and Terry Chapman.
You guys suck. Say goodbye, man.
Nobody?
Mayor, in lieu of a motion, I mean, I don't have any problem with you doing the exact same process with the identified five people. Just kind of go through them individually and, and vote on who would be that one-year term versus two-year term. It'll go quicker.
We'll go down the list again. In alphabetical order. Okay, we have Andrew Croce. I'm sorry, Terry Chapman is first. Do we have a motion as to one year or two years?
Two years.
All in favor of two-year term?
I thought it was two or three years. No?
No, it's one.
One or two.
Two.
Okay.
Two of them are for one year and three of them are for two, just to get them staggered.
Okay. So again, Terry Chapman, one or two?
You said 2026 and 2027, no?
Yes, they start January first.
Then they don't start until January?
Okay, okay.
Okay. Here we go again. Terry, Terry Chapman, one or two years?
Two years.
Two years.
All in favor of two years? Okay. Summer Sanford, all in favor of one year, of two years? So Summer?
I was going to do one year.
One year.
Let's do one year and if she likes it.
Okay. Okay, so all, all in favor of Summer Sanford for a two, a one-year term, raise your hands.
Why?
One year. For a one-year term.
Okay. Andrew Croce, one year or two years? All in favor of two years, raise your hand. Okay. Ann Whacker?
Two years.
Two years.
All in favor of two years, raise your hand. Paul Dunphy?
Two years.
All in favor? All in favor of Paul for two years?
Two years.
All one year? Okay. Okay, so we have, we have that. Okay. Yeah, everybody else for two. Okay. 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 Boards in, uh, second, uh, specific public hearing, 6.1. Conduct a public hearing on a request to amend the code of the City of Seabrook, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article One, in general, Section 1.1, 1.10, definition by creating a, a definition for smoke and head shops.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this item's on the agenda because we're getting a lot of inquiries about smoke head shops, CBD sales and vape shops. So as we go through these different items, you're going to see how they're connected. And what we're trying to do is do some cleanup in the zoning ordinance as part of this process. So when we initially in 2012, we created, within the land use matrix, we created the use, smoke and head shop. And we created parking requirements for smoke and head shop, but we never created a definition for smoke and head shop. So what our code states is if we don't have a definition for it, we go to Wikipedia or to Webster and we create, create that definition. What's happening is that broad definition that you get by using that source, I'm getting a lot of pushback that that's not what we should be doing. So what I've, what I'm asking from council and what I was asking for P and Z is to clarify that for us and let's create a definition. It's something that council has adopted and that's what staff will use in the future as people come in and try to, uh, uh, request this use. Uh, currently this use is permissible within a C3 and LI zoning district. So there's no ask for any modification of that. And basically you're required to have one, uh, parking space for every 300 square feet of, of building area. And we haven't had any problems with that, with the existing or grandfathered, uh, head shops that we do currently have in town. So the definition that's being proposed, uh, and being recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission is, uh, smoke shop, head shop is a retail establishment primarily engaged in selling products related to the consumption of tobacco, cannabis and other herbal substances. It typically offers smoking accessories such as pipes, bongs, rolling papers and vaporizers, along with various tobacco blends and legal cannabis items, including CBD products and edibles. Additionally, smoke shops may carry merchandise associated with the use of illicit substances. These shops often sell signs, posters and apparel that promote cannabis cultures and alternative lifestyles, including clothing emblazoned with cannabis-themed graphics or slogans. Such establishments are required to comply with all applicable local, local, state and federal laws regarding the sale and distribution of both legal and illegal, I mean, both legal and illegal items, including adherence to age restrictions and licensing requirements. So again, you're going to see this is an all-inclusive definition for smoke and head shop. And as we go into the other items that we're going to follow, you're going to see we're going to isolate those different things as we move through the process or different uses. At the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 24th, it was unanimously recommended by the commission to approve, uh, this definition. And I welcome any questions you may have.
So my question is, you said that you were getting pushback, but from who? Or is it like the owners of these shops or our courts or what?
The new business owners. So the new business owners that would like to come to our city. So this has been addressed over and over again. We are working through the process of bringing new business into town. We do have some strip centers that need upgrading. And so typically what happens in this environment is the rent or the lease rates within these structures are lower than normal market. And these are the type of uses that typically want to come into those centers because they got cheaper rent. So I'm having a lot of people that are coming in, wanting to put in vape shops, CBD shops and head shops in our city. And so what I'm trying to do is get direction and clarity from council on where you want these, how you want them, or do you not want them? And so that's kind of this process. And you're going to see as I go through these three items, it's going to build upon itself.
But, but we already have zoning restrictions on where they can go. So they really can't go into those C, those aren't C3 establishments.
Yeah. Well, what we're doing too is currently staff's been interpreting that vape shops and CBD also fell under the definition of head shops and you couldn't do those things. Recently, we came back in 2023, I came before council to request as a business owner that CBD sales be separated out of this definition and now its own use. And so that's the process that we're going through tonight too. You're going to see, I want to modify and enhance the CBD definition and create a definition and a land use for vape sales. And then again, put those uses in the land use matrix in different locations. And I'm getting a mixing, co-mingling these because these three items are all going to go together, but you're going to see. And put this all together where it makes it into zoning ordinance. We can easily interpret what each individual use is and then clearly communicate to the small business owners that want to come to our community where they can put these uses.
Okay. This is a specific public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak for or against this proposal? Yes, come up, please. Yeah, come up here. I'm sorry. Give us your name and address.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. Uh, my name is Vincent Worley, 1635 Pebble Banks Lane. And, uh, I'm a commercial real estate broker. I've done this for 40-plus years. Done probably 375 of them, about 10 million square feet. And I can assure you that there were many tenants that would like to come into this town. And basically, uh, Mr. Landis here is one of the very best people that I've dealt with in my career. We did a lot of projects in Sugar Land and Pearland, other master plan community areas. He is one of the most professional that we've dealt with. He understands the market. He understands the nature of retailing and he understands what business owners are looking for. So you have the right guy to do this. And what you're looking at is old shopping centers, 30 years old, 40 years old, that have not been renovated. If you want it to look better, you got to renovate it. Then you get the better rents and then you get the better tenants. But you can't charge the higher rates than the dog centers. You have to change it. So what we're doing is bringing in retailers that can work with what's here. You know, we're trying to bring a restaurant chain out of Oklahoma here that has over 200 locations. We have an operator that's on the other side of the bridge that's looking to open a second location. My wife and I, my wife's executive director for Lee College in Baytown. I'm a senior vice president for Henry S. Miller. We're the oldest commercial brokerage firm in Texas over 100 years. So I go to my friend's store across the bridge. I want him here. I'm tired of driving over there, going through all the traffic to get through 96 and all of that, to go get bath bombs for my wife or lotions or creams or massage oils or pet treats or things like that for our household. It's ridiculous to have to do that. The only reason it's that way is because you have C3 zoning. C3 is the only thing that allows it. The only reason you don't allow it in C3 is you don't want to do any new C3. You won't bump your C3 zoning up on the C2 centers because C3 allows for sexually businesses as well. And you don't want sexually oriented businesses. So you won't increase C2 to C3 to allow for the use. You have to downgrade the use to C2 to allow it to be permissible, which is what you've done. So what you've done is what needed to be done. It's the only way to do it. It's the only way to attract people to come here. We talk with people all over the country. We have people from all over the world coming to us looking to do franchises in open locations in Houston right now. And as long as we know that we have a conducive business environment and we have people like Mr. Landis here who understands the show, that if we come to you and bring you quality tenants, that we have an opportunity to make it work and make your town better. I've lived here for 11 years. My wife has been here for over 20 years. So we're invested in this community and we wouldn't bring anything here that would not be worthwhile for the community because we don't want that. We want what's good. And so I can tell you, my client who's on 96, right before the HEB and the Kroger, there's plenty of mommies that go across the bridge over there to get the bath bombs, the creams, the lotions, gummies and things like that. What we're looking to do is create a health and wellness type concept, a streamlined concept, more for the, uh, medical benefit. You know, I, I was, I found out I was a diabetic when I was going into a coma and they blew me up with insulin when I came out of the hospital. I gained so much weight and I couldn't lose it really until I got off the insulin. But then I plateaued and I just couldn't lose anymore. And a gentleman I know that has 75 stores on the East Coast says, why don't you try these gummies? They're really good for inflammation. If you get the inflammation under control, you can lose the extra weight. I dropped 15 extra pounds just from the gummies. My work didn't change. I still work 80 hours a week. Stress hasn't changed. The economy sure hasn't gotten better. It hasn't gotten easier to get deals done. It's only the gummies. And so because of that, I was able to lose extra weight, which brought my cholesterol down, which brought down the, the blood pressure and all these other things. So there's benefits to this. All my family's in medicine. I'm the stepchild in real estate. So, you know, my benefit was doing their leases for free. But there is a definite category for this. The two hottest categories in retail is pet care and medicine. All the docs are coming out of the medical buildings. Only your orthopods, your general surgeons, the ones that need to be in there for the referrals are staying in the medical buildings. Everybody else is coming out to get the street traffic, to get the visibility, to get the exposure, to have access to the people. It's all changing. And so with, with Mr. Lanch's help here, we can turn this and make it better for y'all. And so we appreciate everything that y'all do and we'll continue to try to bring quality people to your community. But I can assure you, we won't bring anybody that isn't.
Okay. We appreciate it, Vincent.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, with that, anybody else? With that, we'll close the public hearing on 6.1. 6.2. Conduct a public hearing on a request to amend the code of the City of Seabrook, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article One, in general. Section 1.1, oh, definitions by creating a new definition for CBD, cannab, whatever, sales and consider amending the code of the City of Seabrook, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article Five, off-street parking, loading, ingress and egress. Section 5.04, Comprehensive Parking Regulation, Matrix Table 5-C, Required Parking Spaces by Land Use Category and by Adding CBD and Creating New Associated Parking Regulations. Sean?
So again, as I stated before, this is cleanup. So, uh, back in 2023, I brought this forward and we created a definition and we added this use to the land use matrix. And so we allowed this land, this use to be, uh, allowed by right within a C3, LI and a C2 zoning. But as part of that process, we never created the, we created a definition, which I am requesting that we modify, and we never added any of the, uh, parking regulations to the zoning. So that's what this item is tonight. What I'm proposing for a definition is that CBD cannibal, cannabidal sales would actually be redefined to a retail establishment primarily engaged in the sale of products containing cannabidal CBD derived from hemp or cannabis plants. Such products may include CBD oils and tenequers for sublingual or oral consumption, CBD edibles like gummies, chocolates and beverages, as well as CBD topicals such as creams, bombs and lotions for skin application. The shop may also offer CBD capsules and supplements containing specific dosages of CBD, as well as CBD vaping products, including E liquids or cartridges designed for vaporization. However, a CBD shop shall not sell or display tobacco products, cigarettes, cig, I mean, yeah, cigarettes, cigars, loose tobacco, cannabis paraphernalia, pipes, bongs, rolling papers, accessories that facilitate smoking, lighters, grinders, storage containers or novelty items associated with tobacco smoking culture. Such establishments are required to comply with all applicable local, state and federal laws regarding the sale of and distribution of both legal and illegal items, including adherence to age restrictions and licensing requirements. So what I've really done is you can see that we created a, a straight-up definition for CBD sales. And then there's an exclusion for doing a lot of the stuff or selling the things that are being sold in head shops. And that's the modification from the existing definition to the proposed. Before, we just defined CBD sales and I'm trying to separate what a head shop is from CBD sales and then creating that exclusion. So if somebody's selling CBD and they come in and they want to propose selling CBD, we have something within the definition where we can go out and say, if you're selling pipes, bombs or any of these other things, you're a head shop. You're not doing CBD sales. And it's creating and isolating that use.
But this was a part, this, this one was about?
I can't hear you.
This one was about parking regulations?
Well, the next item is, so it's a two-part thing. First one's creating a def, new definition. So that's what you read. And then secondarily, I want to add to the parking regulations that they're required to have one space per every 300 square feet, which is our normal retail parking requirement. So this is a two-part item. You're creating a new definition and we're creating a parking requirement.
Okay, but is that the same as the C3 parking regulation for retail? Is that the same regulation?
It's the same for C2. And so our parking regulations aren't set up in zoning districts. It's set up by use. So it, like retail use, it would throughout the city has the one space for every 300 square feet.
Okay. All right. Any questions, counsel? Okay, again, this is a specific public hearing. We are opening up 6.2. Is there anybody out there that's, wants to speak for or against? Is there anybody out there that wants to speak for or against this change? That being said, we'll close the public hearing. Six point three. Conduct a public hearing on a request to amend the code of the City of Seabrook Appendix Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Article One, in general, section one point one oh definitions by creating a definition for vape shop, and consider amending the code of the City of Seabrook Appendix Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Article Three, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Associated Regulations, Section three point one five Comprehensive Land Use Regulation Matrix by adding vape shop to Table A, Uses permitted by right and conditional uses. Determine permitted use by condition or by right within the land use activity, and consider amending the code of the City of Seabrook Appendix Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Article Five, Off-Street Parking, Loading, Ingress and Egress. Section five point oh four Comprehensive Parking Regulation Matrix Table Five point, or Five dash C, Required Parking Spaces by Land Use Category by adding vape shop.
So, this, this item, this use currently is not in the zoning code at all. So there's not a, it's not in the land use matrix. There's no parking regulations, there's no definition. So again, is, what I'm trying to do is, was we modify this through the code. We're now taking smoking head shops. We've taken all, you notice in that definition, all three things were in it. Now we're breaking it out where somebody could possibly come in and do each one of those uses individually within the code with different zoning districts it could be in. So what I'm, so what, first thing is, we're proposing a new definition. And so this is the definition for vape shop. It's quite long, so you guys bear with me. I want to read it into the record so that everybody knows what we're stating. So vape shop is a retail establishment primarily engaged in the sale of electronic cigarettes, e-cigarettes, vape pens, and related accessories, as well as various types of e-liquids and vaping products. This includes devices that vaporize a liquid solution, e-liquid for inhalation, such as e-cigarettes and vape pens, alongside e-liquids that typically consist of propylene glycol, vegetable glycerin, flavorings, and optional nicotine. The shop may also offer various accessories, including coils, batteries, and chargers, as well as ancillary services related to vaping. A vape shop shall not sell or display the following items: tobacco products, cigarettes, cigars, loose tobacco, cannabis paraphernalia, pipes, bongs, rolling papers, accessories that facilitate the use of cannabis products, lighters, grinders, or novelty, novelty items associated with the tobacco-smoking culture. Such establishments are required to comply with all applicable local, state, federal laws regarding the sale and disperition of both legal and illegal items, including adherence to age restrictions and licensing requirements. So, again, a lot of people want to come in, and they want to say there're going to be a vape shop, and then we show up to do enforcement, or we will show up to do enforcement, and they're selling head shop stuff. So what we're trying to do now is create a definition for vape shop. It's very clear, if you want to come and do a vape shop, this is the definition, and this is the use. Now, as part of that, there was a proposed parking regulation that's, again, it's a light retail use, where it's just presenting or promoting that it should be one space for every three hundred square feet of area. And what the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending is that this use would only be allowed by right in C-three and LI. However, there's a conditional permit, conditional use permit process or option within the. So in C-two, State Highway one forty-six South and State Highway forty-six Main, somebody could come in with that particular use, much like we did with tattoo parlors, and we've done with multiple other uses. They could present to council and P and Z that we feel that this, this location's appropriate, and you guys could consider it on an individual basis.
Don't we already have a vape shop in C-two? Don't we already have a vape shop in C-two?
We have one grandfathered vape shop in C-two right now. It's over in the shopping center with Maribel's. And there's also a head shop in that center also that both predate our ordinance modifications. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of this item, and it was unanimous.
Any questions, counsel? Again, this is a specific public hearing. On item six point three, is there anybody who wants to speak for or against this? Come up.
Jonathan Byers, three six six three Nassau Road One, Unit four fourteen, yeah, four fourteen, sorry. I don't even know where I live. I was waiting until this final definition came through. It's pretty important that we, we notate the differences between the old-school head shop from when we were all young and kids, and you'd go and pick pipes and bongs and stuff that nobody used for marijuana. The, the big difference is, and if anybody's been to Vapor Trends, which is right next door to Maribel's, as well as, dang it, I can't remember the head shop slash CBD shop that's next door now, but they're owned by the same people, Rock and Roll It, sorry. So Rock and Roll It is very clearly a head shop that sells pipes, bongs, tobaccos, loose leaf, CBD products, like all, all this stuff, right? They're not a CBD store that sells the creams and bombs and stuff like that. They, they really are a head shop. But if you walk into Vapor Trends, Vapor Trends on the exact opposite side of the spectrum, most people, say, older than fifty years old, or sorry, yeah, older than fifty years old these days, would look at a place that are here vape shop, and they would automatically think, head shop. I don't want those bongs in my, in my, my area. But in reality, if you talk to any of the owners of a vape shop, a vape shop owner doesn't even care if you don't want them to sell CBD. They look at that list of, of things that they're removing, and they're like, whatever, I make all my money off of nicotine vape. And even now, they have vape that doesn't have any nicotine in it whatsoever. And, and people like my wife, who prefer to go to a place like Vapor Trends, because it's, it's a Walmart for nothing but vapor nicotine products, and just crazy how much things, anyway. So, but there's, there's a, it's a big deal to have a massive separation between a head shop and a CBD shop and a vape shop. And I think he's done a pretty good job of defining how that should go. And the, the, well, I don't know, whatever, free commerce, I don't care. I understand why people don't want a head shop in their neighborhood. But a really classy CBD shop is, is out there. There are plenty of them out there that are very high-end and much like Vincent said, are more medically oriented, you know, into new age stuff versus even a vape shop, which is, man, it's, it's just the newest way for people to get their nicotine fix. I personally prefer cigars, but who am I to tell somebody how they get nicotine? So anyhow, that's my two cents.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? With that, we'll close the specific public hearing on six point three. Six point four. Conduct a public hearing on a request to amend the city code of the City of Seabrook Appendix Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Article One, in general, section one point one oh definitions by creating a definition for mobile vending, and consider amending the code of the City of Seabrook Appendix Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Article Three, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Associated Regulations, Section three point one five Comprehensive Land Use Regulation Matrix by adding mobile vending to Table Three A, Uses permitted by right and conditional uses determining permitted use by condition or by right within the land use activity, and consider amending the code of the City of Seabrook Appendix Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Article Five, Off-Street Parking, Loading, Ingress and Egress, Section five point oh four Comprehensive Zoning Parking Regulation, Ingress and Egress, Section five point oh four Comprehensive Parking Regulation Matrix Table Five C, Required Parking Spaces by Land Use Category by adding mobile vending and creating new associated parking regulations.
Sorry.
I, I am getting tired of this.
You haven't even got to the new business. So, again, the owner of the, the new wine and cheese location in Old Seabrook kind of facilitated this item. We do currently have a permitting process and a definition for mobile food vending. And so that's within the permitting process. So what, what we've built upon on this is now, within the land, within the zoning ordinance, we want to create a definition for mobile vending, a definition, add it to the land use matrix, and creating parking requirements for it. This is something staff supportive of. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended what I'm about to present unanimously for approval. So basically, again, there's a lot of questions what the difference is between mobile vending and mobile food vending. And I'm going to clarify that, I think, when I read these two definitions, because one's the sale of food, one's the sale of goods and services. So they're two different things. So, right now, mobile vending, the definition if approved would be the operation of a mobile unit, such as a cart, trailer, or vehicle that is designed to sell goods and provide services directly to consumer in designated areas. This use encompasses a wide range of retail activities, including the sale of merchandise such as clothing, crafts, electronics, and other consumer goods, as well as the provisions of services such as repairs, grooming, and art entertainment. Again, she showed examples. I also downloaded some additional examples from the presentation that she had and some additional. So again, there's, I think she hit on a, a good topic that, as you, I go through this, you'll see, you can define what these structures are going to look like. It doesn't have to be a conventional trailer. It could be something that's more like a tiny house or something like that. And so these are the examples that she showed. And then these are some examples where they could be trailers, possibly. So this is a nail, a, a, a mobile nail salon, a shoe bar, so they're selling, you know, shoes. And then your typical mobile vendor that tells, sells T-shirts, hats and shirts. What's being proposed is two parking, two customer parking spaces for every mobile unit. So that's what would be added to the, the parking matrix. And then what was being proposed for addition to the land use matrix is to add this. And then P and Z's concern was this use is a lot like a farmer's market or those type of uses, and to not just allow it by right anywhere in the matrix, but make it a conditional use. And I think it ties back to the conversation that the individual had with you earlier, is if you make it a conditional use, somebody can come in with a site plan, with a, a plan of it, of what they're requesting, and you can prescribe, as you guys are well aware, in a conditional use, conditions, what the site paving's going to be, how the layout's going to occur, maybe even what the architectural standards of what the different uses or trailers are going to look like. So that was something that P and Z took into consideration as they went through the process also. So again, the recommendation from planning and zoning is to just make it a conditional use in the commercial districts. And if somebody has a concept in mind, they can come present it. You guys can approve it on an individual basis.
Any comments, counsel? Questions?
So you have mobile food vendor, but you don't have mobile retail. So do you, do you need both of them in that?
Well, what you're going to see is the next item is dealing with mobile food vending. So this is just dealing with this one.
Okay, this is a specific public hearing. Does anybody want to speak for or against the six point four amendment? That being said, we'll close the public hearing. Item six point five. Conduct a public hearing on a request to amend the code of the City of Seabrook Appendix Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Article One, in general, section one point one oh definitions by creating a definition for mobile food vendor, and consider amending the code of the City of Seabrook Appendix Eight, Comprehensive Zoning, Article Three, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Associated Regulations, Section three point one five Comprehensive Land Use Regulation Matrix by adding mobile food vendor to Table Three A using uses permitted by right and conditional uses, determining permitted use by condition or by right within the land use activity, and consider amending the code of the City of Seabrook Appendix Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Article Five, Off-Street Parking, Loading, Ingress and Egress, Section five point oh four Comprehensive Parking Regulation Matrix, Table Five C, Required Parking Spaces by Land Use Category by adding mobile food vendor and creating new associated parking regulations.
So, so now this is tying back to mobile food vending. So, in, in twenty twenty-two, I believe, we created a permit process for mobile food vending. We never allowed food trucks in the city, and so we went through the process of creating a permit, permitting process. However, we never addressed it in the zoning ordinance. So we got a permitting process, and there's no land use in the zoning ordinance, there's no parking regulations, and there's no definition for mobile food vending. So what's being presented tonight is we need to add it to the zoning ordinance. So what I've done is, I haven't recreated the wheel. I just took the permitting process, and within the permitting process, we created a definition, and we created, where it's allowed within the land use matrix, it's stated in there broadly. It's, the use is allowed anywhere a restaurant's allowed. So when we created the land use categories within the land use matrix, we just put it in all the commercial districts that it's permissible, for restaurants permissible. And then we just, what we're recommending is just the normal rest, kind of tying it back to mobile vending, still the two spaces for every mobile vending unit. They have to have at least two parking spaces. Typically, these are going in parking lots, and they have lots of parking. But again, if they ended up someplace where they had limited parking, we want to make sure they have two assigned parking spaces to them. So that's what you have before you. So tonight, the proposed definition is a business, a mobile food vendor is a business or individual that sells food and beverages from a movable setup such as a food truck, car, or trailer. These vendors typically operate at various locations, including street fair, street fairs, parks, festivals, construction sites, private properties, and busy urban areas. That's pretty, that's the language that's right in the permitting process. So we just, I just duplicated that. Again, two customer parking spaces for every mobile vending unit. And then lastly, what I described in Table Three A in Section three fifteen, what's being proposed is just, it's permissible by right in any of the zoning districts that we're allowed restaurants. One thing that we did footnote in this is that a permit is required. So it's in the land use matrix. If anybody's looking at the land use matrix, there is a special permit that's, has to be issued and certain requirements within that permitting process for them to operate in, in these zoning districts. And so that's kind of how it's highlighted in the zoning ordinance. And right now, we haven't had any problems communicating with people that are, to individuals that are coming to our community and want to operate a, a mobile food vending unit. And I welcome any questions. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this unanimously, as I presented it.
Any questions?
I have a question. What about ice cream trucks? Do they have to get a permit, just in general?
They do.
They do, okay.
They would fall under the classification. And currently, they do. They come, you know, if somebody's doing mobile vending sales in our city, they do have to come in. We quantify that they have health certificates and all the insurances and all the stuff that's outlined within our permitting process.
Okay, and one, like, that goes through Lake Point Forest is a little sketchy. I'm just wondering. All right, thank you.
Well, and I'm not going to tell you that somebody's not bootlegging in our city right now. It's hard to catch sometimes somebody who's that mobile. So I'm not, I don't, I'm not, we haven't issued any permits to an ice cream truck at this time. So if somebody's in your neighborhood doing that, they're bootlegging in, and somebody needs to contact PD when it's occurring, and we can address it that way.
Before I leave my house, they will break the law. After they leave my house, maybe.
Is there anything in here about the music that they play?
And I'm not going to say that we don't have the same situation, even though our laws and permits say we may be having some rogue food trucks that come through and go to construction sites. We, you know, again, we got the resources that we have to regulate this. But typically, I think we created this ordinance so that it's really the people that are coming in our community becoming stationary for all periods of time, the snow cone, the trailer, things like that. And so we're not going to catch all the people that are coming and out that are just here for a few minutes and leaving. But for the most part, I think the ordinance is, and the permitting process is working well.
Can you put a regulation in about the song? Because I'm tired of it, too.
Okay, this, again, this is a public hearing. Does anybody want to speak for or against this one? That being said, we'll close the public hearing. Six point six. Conduct a public hearing on a request to update the City of Seabrook's official zoning map. Sean.
So, what our zoning ordinance states is that every five years, we have to create a new official zoning map. This action is not changing any zoning within the city. So every time you guys take action, or Planning and Zoning takes action on a zoning change, we modify the map on our GIS system. So if you go to our GIS system, there's an interactive map, and you can go through and look at all the different zoning districts. That's updated as changes are made. But our current zoning But our current zoning ordinance says that we have to create this official map every five years. The last time this map was updated and created, that official map was in 2019, so it's just a formality of being in compliance with our zoning ordinance, and, once this is, is adopted, there'll be some signatures on it, and we keep it as the official map. But, next, in the next year, if you guys make modifications, approve a PUD, change some zoning on a property, that happens, once it's approved, and it's, it's, it's modified on the actual GIS system. So, it, our zoning map that most people use on a regular basis, it's always current and, and available for someone to review.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Again, this is a specific public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak for or against this amendment? That being said, we'll close the public hearing. 7.0, bid awards. 7.1, approve or rejection of bid project 2024-11 Carruthers, Carruthers grading and drainage project, as no bids were received.
Mayor and counsel, bringing this item back to you. We did go out to bid, uh, the engineer, our staff had come back, we had made the modifications, went out to bid, uh, and we've had no bidders. So, this would be a formal rejection of the bid. Next steps, staff would recommend that we go to our pre-bid list that we have. We have a number of, uh, purchasing cooperatives that go through, uh, different competitive bid processes, so that would be checking the box as far as making sure we go through a competitive bid process. We're recommending that we don't go back out and try to rebid this, but look at, to those cooperatives. But the action before you tonight is to formally reject, uh, project number 2024-11.
I've got a question. How often does this occur that we get zero bids?
We've had it, uh, from time to time, where we've had zero bids.
Is the reason that the bid was denied, or they didn't put bids in, is it because they were concerned about the engineering of the, of the job?
I can't answer that specifically. We didn't have any questions that I'm aware of that came from even prospective bidders, so I don't have a lot of feedback. We've got a portal that will allow vendors to ask questions, and I don't think, to my knowledge, we've had any questions.
So, is this project not going to happen now? Is that what you said, you're not going to go back out to bid?
Right. Well, instead of going back out to bid and probably, you know, likely not getting bidders, we do belong to a number of purchasing cooperatives, so they do have, uh, general contractors on there, so staff could go after, looking at all our cooperatives to see if we could get a bid. Sean is already working with one that we're aware of to see if they would be able to bid and give a, a quote on that.
And you have to do, you can't go to that option unless you go through this step first, is that correct?
Uh, this is traditionally what we've done with our capital projects, because it was, we talked about this being out of bond funds, we've got to have that competitive bid met, so this is what we did originally. We just didn't, unless we weren't going to get any bidders. So, um, I think we, we've conversed with legal, uh, the competitive bidding is satisfied through the cooperatives, and we'll see what we can come up with getting some quotes.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve 7.1 as written.
Second. All in favor? Okay, thank you. 8.0, new business. 8.1, considering take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-27, a request to amend the code of ordinance of the city of Seabrook by creating a definition for smoke head shops. I am told I do not have to read the whole ordinance over again.
Move to approve 8.1. Second.
Any more questions? Concerns? All in favor? Thank you. 8.2, considering take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-28, a request to amend the code of the city of Seabrook by creating a new definition for CBD and creating new associated parking regulations.
Move to approve 8.2.
All in, any more questions? All in favor? Thank you. 8.3, considering take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-29, a request to amend the code of the city of Seabrook by creating a definition for vape shop, adding vape shop to Table 3-A using permitted by right and conditional uses and creating new associated parking regulations.
Move to approve 8.3. Second.
Any more questions, concerns, comments? All in favor? Passes unanimously. 8.4, considering take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-32, a request to amend the code of the city of Seabrook by, by creating a definition for mobile vending, adding mobile vending to Table 3-A using permitted by right and conditional uses and creating new associated parking regulations.
Move to approve 8.4. Second.
All in favor? Like, did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. 8.5, considering take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-30, a request to amend the code of the city of Seabrook by creating a definition for mobile food vendor, adding mobile food vendor to Table 3-A using permitted by right and conditional uses and creating new associated parking regulations.
Move to approve 8.5.
Second.
More questions? All in favor? Thank you. 8.6, considering take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-31, a request to update the city of Seabrook official zoning map.
Move to approve 8.6.
Second.
All in favor? 8.7, considering take all appropriate action regarding the approval of an agreement between the Seabrook Police Department and the state of Texas to acquire department defense equipment for criminal justice and emergency preparedness purposes through the Texas LE, LEESO program and authorize the city manager and chief police to execute all associated documents. Chief.
Good evening again. This program is basically allowing, uh, local law enforcement agencies to apply to the state to get, uh, DOD equipment that's been de-milled. They pulled it out of their, out of their use pool. What I'm looking for is either some high water rescue vehicles, or preferably something that's armored, so that we can use it as a high water vehicle, but it's also got a dual purpose, so we don't have to wait on a neighboring city SWAT team to get here. We can go do what we need to do immediately, uh, just to save people's lives.
Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. One other thing, it's free. All we have to do is pay for maintenance and upkeep.
Oh, this, so this isn't an auction deal?
No, sir. This doesn't cost us anything. We've just got to, if it's an armor, a piece of armor equipment, we've got to give it back when we're done with it. That's the only stipulation. Okay.
Move to approve 8.7.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Sometimes.
Thanks, chief. Consider and take all appropriate, I, I'm sorry, 8.8, considering take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-33, amending the park regulations for changing in the park hours. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Seabrook, Chapter 65, Parks, Recreation and Municipal Facilities, Article 2, Parks, Grounds and Facilities, Division 2, Regulations, Section 65-33, by amending and updating various park hours, providing for a penalty in the amount not, not, any amount of not more than $500 for violation of any provisions here of, by inclusion into the code, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict therewith and providing for sever. Yeah?
Mayor and counsel, uh, we're bringing this ordinance back with, uh, beginning of putting the installation of the trail lights at Metter Park. Started the conversation, we looked back and needed some clarification. So, the modifications before you tonight, which is completely up to counsel, would be to change, obviously, the park that has now the new solar lighting to give runners and joggers, um, the ability to come in early and stay late. So, the proposed times for Metter Park would be 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. All other parks, uh, would be switching from our current, so our current signs right now state sunrise to sunset. As far as enforcement, that sometimes can create a little bit of a, big, you know, just a problem as far as what, what that means to everybody. So, uh, talking with the police chief, we came across some hours that some of our neighboring cities use. Again, this is up for discussion, so we have, on the, uh, non-school nights, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM on, uh, Sundays through Thursdays. I've also submitted to you, uh, in hard copy on your desk, that we inadvertently did not address Pine Gully Park. Pine Gully Park is on the coast, and we do have a gate. We also employ gatekeepers part-time. Their job duties, uh, are to go out and open at sunrise and to close at sunset, so, uh, however this is finalized, uh, we would like to, uh, add that section into the park hours to be separate and keep that at sunrise to sunset.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've been on record, uh, I'd rather have our parks open more than closed. I've talked to a lot of people who like to come at, you know, they go down and fish at Pine Gully or whatever, or go to other parks. I've never been a big fan of saying, you can go here or there at times, you know, um, people run before 5:00 in the morning, it's dark, but that's their choice, a lot of them have lights. That's just me. I'm just not a big, you know, limit the people, because most of the people using the parks live here in Seabrook, and you have lights where they play basketball at Metter Park. What's wrong with someone wanting to, you know, play at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning? They're just playing basketball. And now you have lights for the walking part, but then you limit it to a certain time, and that's just me. I mean, if you have lights, I don't know why you have to limit the time, but, and I already know it's going to be safety and all that kind of thing, but, oh, well, just, I just think parks should be open more often than closed.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, um, with Joe as well. I mean, I understand Pine Gully, it's gated, makes sense, close it and open it, but I'm with Joe, there's a lot of people that run early in the morning and, uh, or late in the evening, so, um, I just think if the space is open, let them go. I don't think you need to restrict them, um, and that's their decision if they want to be out there or not, but I understand it's a safety issue. I, I wouldn't want to be out there at 2:00 AM, I understand, but, um, but I think if you start putting hours, it's kind of restricting our residents, but that's just me.
Are the, are the, uh, the lights are solar, correct?
The lights are solar, and they're only at Metter Park.
I have a question about Pine Gully Park. Why, why would we keep that separate? I understand there's a gate, but why do we even have a gatekeeper if we don't have a pier? And, because I thought the gatekeeper was there to take payment for the pier.
They are, uh, not just the pier, but the park. That's one of our more popular parks, so we did put a fee structure in there. It can get quite crowded, especially on the holidays, and that's why that new fee structure was created many years ago. So, it kind of regulates, uh, not overcrowding the park.
We're still charging people to go into the park?
Yes.
I did not know that.
Just out of, just man residents, right?
Correct.
Non-residents. Why do we charge them? Do you know?
No, not off the top of my, $5. I know there's a different holiday rate as opposed to just normal days, so.
Okay.
It's a little bit more on the holidays.
Since the pier has been down, the park attendance is way down, so, um, that's, I keep pushing the pier, but anyway, um, okay.
Okay.
Move to approve 8.8.
Second.
Wait, you got to do it with the amendment.
Oh. Okay, move to approve 8.8 with the recommendation as presented by staff. Pine Gully, uh, normal hours operation should be from sunset, sunrise to sunset. Metter Park, uh, from, uh, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. All other parks, the opening and closing times, uh, shall be described, wait, what is that it is? Oh, wait a minute. From 6:00 to 11:00 on Fridays and Saturdays, and from 6:00 to 10:00 on Sundays through Thursdays.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Can I, we, I have one more question. What, what happens if somebody's out there at, outside of those hours? Are they ticketed? Are they fined? Are they arrested? I mean, what is the?
They're asked to leave.
If they're out in the parks past those times and we get a complaint, or we see them in the area, we just ask them to leave.
Okay. But if they were just, they happen to be running and just exercising and running their business, they probably won't get?
Probably not, no.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not, if they're not creating a problem, uh, there's, there's not really a problem.
I mean, I was just looking at the McNair Park in El Lago, which, it says 6:00 AM to 10:00, and I know for a fact that there's workout group, you know, groups out there at 5:30 and, and even before that, so, um, I, I like to hear that, that they'll be able to use it and not really be bothered, so, okay. I'm good with that.
Yeah. Okay. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Go. 8.9, considering take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-34, modifying and continuing a, a civil service classification system to approve a program for lateral police officers. An ordinance modifying and continuing a civil service classification system consisting of classes, positions, pay grades, and compensation levels in the classified service of the Seabrook Police Department, and to provide for and recognize lateral, lateral entry program, providing for repeal with limited extension, providing a severability clause and effective date, containing other provisions related to the subject, and replacing previous adopted ordinances 2024-10.
Mayor and counsel, good evening. I come to you today as the civil service director, um, not just the HR director, um, and the reason that we're asking that we implement this lateral program is so that we can become more competitive with our surrounding agencies. Um, one of the things that we have found is that we are not getting certified police officers applying for our agency, um, and the reason for that is because we have to, we start them at a lower step, uh, which is grade A, and what we're hoping to do is take the years of experience that they bring to our organization and place them at a higher, um, step pay. Chief, did you want to add anything else?
I would just like to add that, uh, part of the reason for this is, again, trying to fill our ranks. We're down four, we'll be down five, uh, pretty soon, and in a small organization, that's a, that's a huge hit. So, this is just one more way that we can maybe attract some candidates for our police force.
Great. Thanks, chief.
Move to approve 8.9.
Any more discussion?
So, you're saying that somebody that's got, like, 10 years' experience and they come here, they're, they're all going to start at grade A?
Yes, current, currently. Yes, they started a brand-new officer pay, uh, the same that we would start someone that just graduated in academy.
Well, that's, yeah, that definitely needs to be checked.
And it's not that we would start them up at 10 years, we do have a limit. It would be five years. So, they could get, if they've got 15, they still start out at the five-year officer mark, but at least that will give them a little incentive. We're an attractive community, but we don't want someone to discount us simply because they, they have to take a pay cut to get here.
For sure. Okay. Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you. 8.10, considering take all appropriate action on the approval of a professional services agreement, Kimberly Horn, for the expansion of Bayside Park, CIP, P28, at the Main Street Wastewater Treatment Plant Site, in the amount not to exceed $83,000 and designate a funding source.
So, mayor and counsel, uh, this particular proposal did go before the EDC. Uh, this came out of our livable center study, and, uh, EDC had indicated that they would like to be a funding partner. So, on the 14th, they did hear this and unanimously approved that they would fund the design proposal, so the funding portion of the item, uh, has been approved by them. I have Christina Malik with Kimberly Horn, uh, who I've been working with. We sat down and looked at the proposal. Uh, Kimberly Horn is now on our on-call professional list, and we looked at the livable center study, took some of the input of what we were trying to do once the Main Street wastewater plant, uh, is demolished. Uh, as a reminder, we have a Cobb Finley that has a proposal that you've already approved for the demolition, so they're working on TCQ permits, working on the demolition, uh, contract that will actually bring down the vertical structures. Uh, Kimberly Horn is also detailed in the project scope, uh, looking at the feasibility of what do we do for a public restroom? So, Christina, uh, is here to kind of answer some questions. I know, uh, counselor was asking earlier about the stakeholder portion of this proposal, so, uh, if there's any questions on her experience of working with other city stakeholder groups, uh, she would be available for those kind of questions. be available for those kind of questions as well.
Questions, council?
The livable study that we did, did that not include design for this area?
So the livable study was Houston-Galveston Area Council. It was a grant that EDC got to do a study, and it's a, it's a study that comes up with projects. And so your projects are then put on the CIP, and then the CIP, you designate funding, uh, and then you have to go into design. So we had a number of roads that were on that project as well. You have to do preliminary engineering proposals. I think council heard before, you know, it's quite costly. So we were at $500,000 to start Main Street, for instance. Um, I'm still looking for grants. That was a little bit outside the comfort level for council. But projects came out of the study, and now we go into implementing those projects. This is a design. Uh, there would be some construction drawing costs that is separate from this. So it, you know, it's quite an investment, uh, to, to move forward on the project.
So this is, this is a design not for, it's not the architectural?
Correct. There'd still be another phase.
Okay. Um, can we make sure that, uh, the, like, OST or any other committees are involved in this process?
Absolutely, yeah.
Before design?
Christina, I'll let you kind of talk about what we talked about and bring in those different groups in, but not quorums necessarily.
Yes. So, hi, good evening, mayor, council. Christina Malik with Kimberly Horn. I also have Jim Patterson joining me tonight. Um, so as far as engagement, we want to seek engagement at multiple levels and multiple points in order to make sure we're really hearing from the community and you guys about what's important and what your vision is for the park. So, um, well, I think we have four points of engagement throughout the process, and we've identified a stakeholder committee. So that would include whoever you feel should be included in that. But we feel like it's really important to have input from, um, a group of stakeholders, a cross-section, be that council, various committees, adjacent property owners, staff. So there's, you know, voice from every group. And then that group is really important to have the buy-in and consists, consensus that they can bring back to their groups and share, and make sure everyone's on board and heard.
What, what are the four steps? Step one was the?
First one, we'll basically do a site analysis and come and share our findings and gather the vision and thoughts, uh, from the group. Um, the second step will be sharing two options. So we'll get feedback on those two options. The third step will be a joint EDC and council presentation to hear whatever the feedback was from the stakeholder input group. And the fourth is a final presentation, basically refinement of whatever option was selected.
Okay.
Incorporating feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, can we get that in writing? Because I have to be the jerk and bring it up, but this was supposed to happen. And we got a bunch of rocks instead of plants, and plants are cheaper than rocks. And I'm pissed off about that because a whole bunch of people were supposed to be involved, and they weren't. So I hear you saying that. I want that to happen, but so do the people because they've talked to me and they're even more pissed than I am. So if this can happen exactly the way you said it, then I think the people will be happy because it was promised before, not from you, and this has nothing to do with you, but it was promised before and not delivered. And they're mad. And so, that, I was asked to bring this up tonight, so I'm doing it. And, uh, I'd love to see that because that's exactly what, and I don't think it should be limited. I think all of council should be involved. I think all of OST, I like that you said the neighbors that are right surrounding, but then the entire city. So you might have to have one or two public deals, but then to get the people, but then that smaller group, which is still not that small, it'd be about 20, 25 people. I think that'd be very important because that's how big of a deal it is. Because it's our park, and, you know, they need their say. So, thanks.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve 8.10.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
8.11, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of first reading of ordinance 2024-35. Update to speed limits and speed zones, and establishing speed limits on State Highway 146 frontage drones in the city of Seabrook, in the city limits of the city of Seabrook until Texas Department of Transportation completes engineering and traffic study. An ordinance amending the code of the city of Seabrook, completely updating Chapter 90, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 2, Speed Restrictions by establishing new provisions, speed zones and limits, providing for penalty of a fine not to exceed $200 or any maximum amount provided by law for violation of any provisions hereof by inclusion into the code, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict with, and providing for severability. Chief?
Uh, the intent behind this is, as we all know, people have been speeding along the frontage roads and along the main lane. So, uh, we were waiting on a traffic study from Tech Dot. Uh, we're still waiting. Uh, so we wanted to change things so we could get some signage up. Uh, Tech Dot agreed to put that signage up. So we wanted to get this an ordinance so we would have something that we could enforce until they complete their traffic study and change the speed limit to whatever they decide is appropriate.
So my question is, so along the frontage roads, 45, what about the main lane?
55.
What is it everywhere else? I mean, like, in La Porte or on?
It's 65 and 55 in Kima, uh, 65 in La Porte. But with all the construction, the slower traffic, uh, needs to prevail, uh, until, until Tech Dot gets their traffic study done.
Okay, I agree with the 45 on the frontage because there are a few signs that say that. The, the southbound side I don't think does, but the northbound does. But, um, 50 on the main lane I think is way too low. I think, and, and the reason I say that is, I like consistency. I don't like, well, I'm, I'm 60 here or whatever, then I have to drop down, you know, because in, in a sense, that becomes like the trap. And that, and then you get a reputation for that. And I understand they're supposed to do their thing. I would just rather keep it, if they're 55 or whatever, we ought to be right with it. Kima and Seabrook at 55, I can live with that. But, you know, five miles low, because I know officers give five to seven range, you know, you know, but any, if we're already that...
Chief, you did say 55, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
I thought he said, it says 50 right here.
55.
Well, I was looking at a page that just had 50. Everything was written through, and then there was a 50. Okay, it's 55.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve 8.11.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. 8.13, oh, I'm sorry, 8, where am I?
12.
8.12, consider and take all appropriate action on a proposal from L.S.A. Incorporated to make repairs to water well number three in the amount not to exceed $88,000. This is under, this is under the contract pricing of bid project 2020-03-324 in the approved agreement. Brian?
Well, number three is our primary backup well. If we ever lose water from Pasadena, this is the well that will automatically kick on and give us our water supply. Um, we are currently in the process of, uh, cleaning the well, uh, through their inspection process. These are items that they found that they recommend being replaced. Uh, we are in agreement with all of it except for the, the 150 horsepower motor.
Move to approve 8.12.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? All in favor? Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
8.13, consider and take all appropriate action for approval to proceed with project recommendations and action needed on the 2025 bond program in May 2025 election for the construction of police station municipal pool.
Mayor and council, I'm sorry. The item before was a discussion item where you can't take formal action. So this item was placed on here. If you guys will take a formal vote for me, just so I can reengage the architects and we'll move forward.
I thought we just discussed that. Do we need to bring, like, our?
Yeah, I put it under discussion items, so you can't formally take any action. I just want for the record, if you guys want to move forward. Like I said, the architect's been put on hold until I get some formal direction. So if you guys would like to, uh, the way it's worded, just take some formal action for record.
So do you need a motion?
Yes.
Correct.
On item 8.13, I move that city council direct staff to proceed with the bond for a police station and include an assessment of other locations where it might be placed, and to proceed with a bond for the pool, and, uh, include the possible cost of facade improvements and what that would look like.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. 9.0, routine business. 9.1, city manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, and the city Seabrook CIP projects.
Mayor and council, uh, there's not a presentation tonight, but I'll just run through quickly the highlights. Uh, on the boards and commissions, your ethics review commission kicked off. Uh, EDC, the item that came before you on the proposal, that was their only item. And then civil service, what Yosenea had come up to speak with you, uh, is also the rules portion that the civil service connected with and, and made approval for. On your CIP projects, our water line project for the old 146 interconnect, uh, is going to be hopefully before you at the next council meeting. So we'll take care of that CIP project. That's a $700,000 water line interconnect. Seascape Water Line is at 80% complete on the designs. Uh, that's a $1.4 million CIP project. And your Pine Gully wastewater treatment plant, uh, the lift station, Enforce Main project. If you see at Toddville and Red Bluff, there is still a crew out there. We've had a little bit of a, a line, uh, issues. There's some lines getting replaced. Once that section is cleared up, uh, then we can make the final, uh, connection with the new plant. The generators on the grants that we've been talking about, we are continually in the background working on that. It's about a million dollars' worth of grants. The city hall and the mobile, uh, generators have been approved. We're waiting for the formal approval letter on the fire department generator. And then there's a lot of activities still going on with emergency management and TIDM for the community house. So that would be the last generator that we're working on. Pine Gully lift station, Enforce Main, uh, we have a wastewater line that's still hanging on the bridge. That, that project is a $200,000 project, and we're working with, uh, the port and, uh, Cobb Finley to get the final design completed on that. For your ARPA projects, the friendship restroom is complete. Your basketball court is complete. Uh, the fencing that you approved at the last meeting is still pending. Shade structures are pending. Your pickleball court on Rep Store has been poured and cured, and we're waiting on painting for that. For Grant Rider, uh, we've talked about, uh, the projects that could lend itself to additional grant funding. We have gone out for RFP for a Grant Rider and management. We'll be opening that, um, tomorrow. And we also have out for sidewalk removal and pla, replacement, which will open in December. I sent a message out earlier on your transportation projects. We had a, a pop-up project that we were unaware of there at Old 146 in Red Bluff. So, um, they're checking with the county. They came back and said that it is just the overlay. So the holes that we were experiencing in that intersection, they're just doing a quick patch and overlay. It's not the full expansion. So as you recall, that full expansion's going to probably be a closure and expanding that intersection to six lanes. So I still don't have a date when that's going to come up on that second project. Uh, 146, uh, Councilor Rasko had sent, uh, we'd had some, uh, notable trash on the side of the road. So we've been in touch with Tech Dot. Again, um, it's a state thoroughfare. We will work on a landscaping, uh, contract at some point. Uh, Sean's reached out to our contact, and at this point, anything that is substantial trash or anything, we are more than welcome probably to volunteer to go out there and pick it up. However, it's not really our responsibility. So we'll have to work through that probably over the next year until Weber's completely out of the corridor, and then we decide what we're going to do with a landscaping contract. So we will try to manage that. Obviously, that's, um, you know, quite a few linear feet for our existing parks and streets to go out there, in addition to the right-of-way mowing that they do. Um, so we'll have to monitor that on a case-by-case basis. But I think the, uh, notable trash has been removed and, uh, no longer in that area. Uh, I did get reached, uh, some contact with Tech Dot today. Uh, I spoke in the past on what I'm calling Access Management Program. So on NASA Parkway, uh, this has been going on for about, I think, seven or eight years. The, our section of NASA Road 1 does not have medians. Uh, to go and even look at medians, they do what's called that Access Management Plan. So we have been put on a list. It's moved to consultant, and now they're getting the boundaries today to kind of get the scope aligned. So hopefully in the next probably few months, we'll get more information on when they'll actually kick that off. And again, that'll be a very public process with Tech Dot. They have got to get input for about a year, different meetings will happen, and then some conceptual designs will come back as far as where the medians are, what the design looks like. Any questions?
Questions, council?
So on 146, with the trash, I'm glad it got picked up. In fact, on the way driving here, there was a guy in a little Bobcat, and they were picking up trash, putting it in the, in the front end of it. So I'm glad about that. But I've driven around other cities, and I notice underneath their high-tension lines, it's mowed a lot. You know, it's not, it doesn't get like that. I'm trying to figure out, you know, who, who takes care of that mowing? Because now we have that sidewalk. We got that little space between the sidewalk and the, the, the feeder road. Then you got all underneath that. I understand that's probably the, um, power people have to mow that. But what I'm getting at is in other cities, it's like mowed all the time. I've even been over to Pasadena, and they mow it all the time. Ours seems to get really high, and, you know, I know there's some lowland kind of there, and I get it, that's wet, so they don't mow. But I, I'm trying to figure out who takes care of that all the time because that's not getting done here.
Correct. So that, right now, until Weber is completely signed off, it is Weber, the contractor, that is supposed to keep that mowed. Uh, Tech Dot, when we contact them, they contact Weber, and I think in the last couple of meetings, we've had comments about how high it got. You can see they've knocked it down, and so we'll have to continue to make that request to Tech Dot, which will go over to Weber. Once Weber releases, then the city of Seabrook needs to make a decision on how manicured you want that to look. Tech Dot will come by about three times a year, and that's all they're, they're going to do. So we'll have to make a decision.
Well, I already know that answer all the time because no one's going to want a bunch of weeds. Um, some joggers told me they can't even, they couldn't run. They're super happy that it got mowed, but then they were having to run by a big box of, uh, unused condoms that were on the road. You know, someone dumped, it must have flown out of a truck, and it was all over the place. And then my next question is, any news on the pier?
So part of doing the RFP for the Grant Rider is to get a consultant on board that we can do a broader search for something that would, uh, uh, give us some additional ideas for funding for that. Um, as we've talked about, $2 million is, you know, even with the Texas Parks and Wildlife, there's not anything that's going to cover that full $2 million plus project. So I'm hoping, working with the Grant Riders, we can tap into some additional funding.
Anybody else? 9.2, the monthly financial report for October 2024.
I can go back to sleep. So tonight, I'll, we are one month into the fiscal year '25, and I'll just, um, go over briefly, uh, where we came out after the month, and y'all stop me when y'all have questions. Uh, revenues for the general fund were, uh, cumulatively $23,000 over our projected budget. Our expenses for the month, we came in, uh, just under $600,000, um, under budget. In the enterprise fund, we are, our revenues were, uh, $78,000 over our projected, um, budget, and the expenses were $73,000 under budget. Any questions so far? Let's see here. Hot tax. Sorry, I brought too many pages. Our hot tax, our, um, October revenues were, came in $82,000 over our projected budget, and... over our projected budget, and the expenses were $1,600 under budget. The EDC is rolling in at $11,000 over the projected budget and revenue, and $18,000 under budget. In our crime district, we are at $8,200 over our projected revenue and $22,000 under budget. Be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions, council? Actually, looks like a good month, Mike. Good job. Appreciate it. 9.3, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and council, your next meeting, regular meeting is scheduled for December 2nd at 6:00 p.m.
Is that our only meeting in December?
Yes, that is our only meeting in December.
December 2nd?
Did I, oh, did I get the number wrong?
The 3rd is the?
It's the 3rd. Type of, sorry about that.
Okay. Do I hear, do I hear a motion? All in favor? We are adjourned at 9:23.